I'll start the session with Dr. Dr. Seaman, pledge.
Oh, we pledge too. Okay, if you would all stand, please write it over your hearts, and let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, could I have Mr. Colby Gilardian, please read the holy pledge, please?
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communication and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge difference of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, can I get a second?
All second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Dr. Chernus, is there anything to report from the closed session?
Yes, the board voted unanimously to approve student settlement agreement with student number?
Two oh two.
Two one one seven one five one two zero two five two zero two six.
Thank you very much. Going to commendations and recognition, can I have, Dr. Chernus is going to read about a new assistant principal, I believe.
I'll jump in, President Marcus. I'm excited to welcome William Cameron, but goes by Billy. Billy, for us, throughout the interview process, was one of the top candidates, both by our current, our soon-to-be sitting principal for El Rodeo. Some of the strengths from the committee and some of the comments from the committee, Billy brings to us, you know, multiple years of instruction, both in and out of the classroom for elementary, strong foundational knowledge of elementary standards, and knowledge of CGI math, has served as an assistant principal and principal, has served in high-performing school districts, and we have the opportunity to steal him now and bring him aboard to BHUSD to be able to potentially work alongside Kim at El Rodeo for the 25, 26 school year. We're super excited. The AP process was extensive, we had, you know, almost 60 applicants for the position within that, paper screenings, Zoom screenings, we had representation from our teachers' union, our school counselors, principals, director of teaching and learning, Dr. Chernus, myself, and the board, some of the board members had the opportunity to be able to meet him as well. So, we are excited to welcome, and I'll hand it over to Dr. Chernus as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Seaman. Assistant Principal Cameron, come on up. As Dr. Seaman mentioned, we're thrilled that you're going to join our district. We hope you're here a long time. You check all the boxes in being successful in high-performing districts, understanding what it's like to succeed in a district like ours, and really your career in elementary education. And so, we think you're going to be a great team member with our new principal, and we just want to welcome you aboard.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank Dr. Chernus, oh, I'm sorry.
You have something to say, add, tell us about.
Oh, I do, yeah. I'd like to thank Dr. Chernus, Dr. Seaman, and of course, the board for considering me for this position. I'm super excited to be here in BHUSD and partner with the El Rodeo community and meet the families and the kids. I'm super excited to dive in next week with the admin team and of course, partner with the other schools in the district to ensure that all of our students receive a robust and engaging learning experience. So, thank you for having me and welcoming me to the community. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go around, Mrs. Manicherry.
Sure, welcome, Mr. Cameron. It was a pleasure to get to know you earlier this week. I just want to share with our community how experienced you are. You've been teaching for a long time, and I'll leave that one at that, but I think what sets you apart is that you were a second, third, and fourth grade teacher. You've been a longstanding principal in the San Diego area. We are really excited to welcome you to the West Side, Los Angeles. And what I loved learning about most was you're a fake or a hidden type A, I should say, and so you really bring the calm, but there's a lot going on in there in terms of instructional leadership, facilities, planning, all of that. And so, I loved seeing the wheels in your head turn, and I know that you're really going to add a lot to the team there, and I know the parents are going to really enjoy getting to know you. So, thank you in advance and wish you all the best.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I just want to welcome you and congratulations. My daughter is going into the second grade at El Rodeo. You will recognize her daily with her yellow late ticket that she is very well-known for. I was actually going to get her a laminate to wear around her neck. Hopefully, that'll change next year. It's just exciting time, we've got brand-new leadership across the board there, it's a brand-new school, or at least refurbished, and we just, you know, have great expectations, but you are fantastic, so we are looking forward to you being there, and you'll be seeing me a lot just as a dad, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, hi. So, thank you so much for meeting separately, that I got a chance to speak to you. I would like to have the community know that your experience with the math curriculum that we're just implementing, a new math program, can you speak a little bit about that?
Sure, I have 10 years, the district I'm coming from has used CGI strategies for over 16 years, and I've been there for the last 10. So, I've seen them in observation as both a principal and put them into practice as a second and third grade teacher, so.
Great, thank you, welcome onboard.
Thank you.
Dr. Stern?
Thank you so much, Mr. Cameron, and very happy to have you, and I love to hear about innovations in math. For those listening, can you tell us what CGI stands for?
Cognitively Guided Instruction, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I would just echo the sentiments of the other members of the board. Welcome aboard, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to getting to meet you more as the school year moves on, and again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so thank you for being here tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I was read a note, "Due to unexpected technical issues, the latest episode of Mrs. Marcus meets will be posted shortly after the meeting on the official BHUSD Instagram, YouTube channel, and website. You can watch it at bhusd.org/mrsmarkismeets. This episode features audio production teacher, Mr. Alex Brightman, and you're going to love learning about him and the amazing audio production pathway at the high school." And I'm sorry that the is down, but we'll just have to move on. And now, I would like to call our dear friend, Mr. Andy Lick, the Cultural Heritage Commissioner, to make a presentation about wanting to do something at the Beverly Hills High School, Swim Gym.
Thank you. So, I think, thank you for listening and hearing me out on this. I am an alum, celebrating my 50th reunion this fall from Beverly, it's hard to imagine. I also went to Hawthorne, and I was just saying, I remember when they built this building, that'll give you an idea of my age. Anyway, so, I'm here because I have, I'm a member of the Cultural Heritage Commission. So, what is the Cultural Heritage Commission? I, to me, I think our unofficial motto should be, "We love our landmarks." So, the Cultural Heritage Commission is composed of five community members who meet quarterly to recognize and make recommendations to the city council for designation of historic properties. And I think the Swim Gym is a perfect candidate for a, to designate as a landmark. So, what does that mean? There are a lot of, a lot of benefits to a property owner for, for a property to be landmarked. The city sort of has an unofficial understanding that we don't landmark properties where the owner doesn't want it. This is an unusual situation. The board doesn't really own the building, but you certainly have a big say in what happens. So, what happens if it's landmarked? The simple answer is, you cannot change the outside of the building, you cannot raise the building, you can do anything you want to the inside. I think at this moment, and for probably the next 50 years, or who knows, nobody has any intention of tearing down the Swim Gym. So, why, why do I think it's important to do it? I think it's important to the, to we older members of the community. I think a lot of people don't really understand the heritage of it and what it's meant. A lot of people are probably familiar with some of the movies, the most famous being, at least to me, It's a Wonderful Life. I brought a couple pictures, you guys have probably seen them, spread them around. It's been used in, in other movies and in other commercials and television shows. It's, there was always a, an understanding when, when I was in school, that there were only two in the world. The last few days, in researching it, I can't find the second one. So, I'm not sure there was another one. Dr. Seaman is raising, is shaking his head, so.
Those two, they were, it was like 2017, 14, we tried to locate another.
I think that's later on.
We were unsuccessful.
Yeah, so.
Mrs. Consent.
So, I'll just go over broadly what it means. No, there's no outright ban on demolition. If it's damaged in a fire or an earthquake and deemed unsafe, it can be raised. There are other, other possible reasons it could get raised. I don't think anybody has any plans to do that. Exterior alterations require review by the Cultural Heritage Commission. Don't think, I know at this moment, there's no plans to make any changes to the exterior. As far as rehabilitation on the interior, all bets are off, anything you want to do is fine. There's a review process and an appeals process if ultimately some future board were to decide they wanted to tear it down or, or change the exterior, so it's not a complete restriction. Let me just see what else. So, what would happen is, I felt that it was important to get the board's thoughts and ultimately, hopefully, their approval. Not really necessary, but it is to me. So, if you were to approve it today or sometime in the future, it would then be agendized at my commission, at our commission, Cultural Heritage Commission. We would discuss the pros and cons of it, we would ultimately put it up for a vote. If we voted for it to be approved as a landmark property, it would go to city council, and city council has the ultimate, they're the ultimate decider. Our next meeting has been postponed, it was July 18th, it will be probably in August. So, let's see. So, just a little bit of history, the, the school was built in '27. The, another interesting part of the Swim Gym, it was built in 1939 as part of the WPA, part of the Work Projects Administration, is that, yeah. So, it, it has a lot of history behind it. Twenty-five yard swimming pool, basketball court that hopefully, again, soon will close over it. So, I think I hear there's issues. So, that, that sort of summarizes why I'm here. I'm happy to answer questions, I have more to say if, if there's interest, but that gives you a broad overview of my thinking and why I'm here.
Okay, we're going to go around the horn. Mrs. Manicherry, can you send me back that, because I have my.
And I will warn you, my hearing is bad, so.
Thank you.
Not a problem, let me know if you have a hard time.
It's a problem for me.
I understand, first of all, hi, it's nice to welcome you to the board.
Oh, thank you.
For joining us. I do have a lot of questions.
Great.
On this one, just because.
I hope I can answer.
To me, the one historical landmark which is, really exemplifies the city of Beverly Hills is the Greystone Mansion, right? Is that considered a historical landmark?
It's a good question, I don't believe it's been landmarked.
Okay.
But I'm guessing, I know it's a very good question. The first property to be landmarked, this commission's only been around, I think, 13 years. The first one was the Beverly Hills Hotel, which was.
Got you.
Probably low-hanging fruit.
The, the reason why I ask is because a lot of the portions of the Greystone Mansion are not open to the public and not open to use in order to, to be able to maintain its integrity and prevent it from encountering any damage. Right now, we have thousands of students a year that use the Swim Gym, and so it really concerns me to designate it, even though I don't want to see anything happen to it, I want it to stay as it is, just like you do, I'm very concerned from an operational standpoint. It's not just our 1,200 high school students, it's not just our 600 middle school students who come and go and use it, but that area is heavily involved in the BHBL basketball program from January through the spring. That area is heavily involved with the summer camp program that we put on with the city using the pool and so on, and so it, it, it really gets a lot of wear and tear. And so, I, I think that it's quite beautiful, and I would like to see it stay as it is, and that's what it's meant to do in our plans in what we're seeing for the future, the next 50, 60 years, but I worry about the school district being subject to commission review should we wish to make any changes. Changes such as maybe we need to change the roof, maybe we want to add an HVAC system to it.
I'm sorry, add a what?
An HVAC system. Maybe we need to change the plumbing, and that would have other consequences. Maybe we want to change the windows. I'll give you one example, we have so much construction going on in that immediate area that one of our contractors caused a leak into the Swim Gym, and the part was actually very challenged, it caused a leak and caused damage, and then another part had to be replaced. The part was really challenging to come across, and it took quite a bit of time. That caused some camps for the city to have to be canceled at the beginning of the summer so we could wait for the part, and so on. And so, my, my number one concern is operationally, what impact it will have on the district being able to perform repairs, remediation, refurbishments as it comes. So, so do you know anything about that, please?
So, many times I've been accused of being a person of few words.
Okay.
The answer's none. There'd be no impact. The only thing that you mentioned that could possibly be impacted is if you were going to change the windows, but I don't.
The doors?
I don't believe there are any windows.
Okay.
So, HVAC, plumbing, any interior, any mechanical, there's no approval needed. The only thing would be the facade look from the outside. As far, as aside from that, there's no impact at all.
No impact.
It wouldn't affect anything, I mean, I, as a, as a old-timer in the city, I would hope that it's going to be kept up to date, and I hope there's the HVC in the plumbing and everything is kept modernized and working, and there'd be no issue.
Okay, we're, what's happening right now is that, if, you might recall where the surface parking lot used to be next to the Swim Gym and the tennis courts are now going to be the new Conheim Athletic Building.
Yeah.
And behind that, there's going to be an additional outdoor pool. The plan is for the Swim Gym to stay. When the new Conheim comes up, the old Conheim will go down, and then there will be a lot more construction in addition to the work that's there, that's happening right now. Do you think it might be advisable to, in a sense, table the conversation until that construction in that area is completed so that we're sure there's no damage to the area, it requires no work? What are, what are your thoughts in that regard? That's going to be the, the core of our construction efforts following this fall, is going to be in that entire athletic area.
Yeah, so the, the old Conheim would have nothing to do with this. Once that's raised and you start construction, if any damage were done to the Swim Gym, I think it's safe to assume that it would be repaired. So, no, I don't, I mean, there may be other reasons that it's advisable to wait, that wouldn't be one to me.
Is the historical, is the historical designation something that's just a Beverly Hills city thing, or does it go up to the state as a state historically designated site as well? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, it's, it's the city, but in this case, the state would be affected because the state owns it. So, how do I say it? The, there's, I can find it, I specifically found the state law which allows school buildings to be designated as landmarks. School buildings can be designated historic landmarks or listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. This typically requires the building to be at least 50 years old or possess exceptional design merit or historical significance. So, two out of three for sure. Probably the third, it was a fairly well-known architect who designed.
Got it.
The building, so. I hope that answers.
And then my last question is, do you mind if you have the time with your commission to refer to the board, other school districts that have, school buildings that have been designated as historical, and if they're still in use and how that's, you know, and then we can do some research about how that's worked out.
We can do some research, and I will get that to the board.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And I'll find out about Greystone.
Thank you.
I should know, but I don't.
It's, it's good to know, I always wondered because. I always wondered, because certain parts of it are accessible but not others?
It's been like that since the city got it, which was in the 60s.
Okay.
And this didn't exist as.
At that time.
Our commissions only existed for 12 years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thirteen years.
I appreciate your answers, and I look forward to the other one.
Thank you. Good questions.
Mr. Stewart, do you have a question today also?
Thank you so much, Andy. I only have one question. Does the designation that your commission and then eventually city council would give the swim gym, does that potentially unlock any type of potential funding because it falls under that designation that could be used for interior upgrades at all?
Not that I'm aware of. For private properties, there are a number of advantages. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, they don't affect the board. One of them is if your home is designated as a landmark, you get significantly reduced property tax. You also are exempt from a lot of local zoning ordinances. Some of you may know I was chair of the planning commission, and we had a few houses, private homes, that came to us, and they were able to get a number of exemptions that the average Joe could not have gotten. I don't think it works the other way, that you could get benefits paid to you, or, but I can research that, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because this is state-owned property, but if it did have a designation, maybe the state has some type of a program or fund for special historical buildings.
That's a good question. Yeah, I can, I'll research that, or I'll have the staff research that.
I think, thank you. Thank you for coming and explaining. I think it's a huge decision to be made. I know we went through some pros and cons. If we, as a school district, it's completely different than a historical site, let's say a museum, or a house, like you said, a single-family home, they have some benefits. As a school district, I'm trying to figure out what would be the benefits, and maybe as a school district, we can lock in our own historical, because the only problem is that we won't be able to touch the building at all. Like, it's going to be locked in that we can't touch anything.
No, that's not correct.
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
No, I said only the exterior.
The exterior, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Yes. Okay. So, we won't be able to touch the exterior, and the issue.
Well, touch, I'm not sure what touch means. Why don't you give me more detail of that?
When it's historical, what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, when it's historical, you have to go by the design review board, and you have to make sure that the coloring and the texture and the material all get approved by the city. The district won't be able to make its own decisions in any kind of exterior work, including windows, anything on the exterior, the roof, right? Everything will be only per your design review board, right? The planning department.
Well, there is a design review board, that is not us, and they would have nothing to do with it.
So, the planning department?
No, the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Oh, I see.
But I partially agree with what you said. When you say you would have, wouldn't be able to make any decisions, that's not true. You could come with whomever, your designer, your architect, yourselves, and come to the city and ultimately Cultural Heritage and say, "We really want to, it's got a domed roof, we really want to make it square." I'd say that would be a long shot.
Let me correct my statement. We would have to propose our decisions to the Cultural Heritage Department for approval. That's my point. So, we can sit as a board, and we can say we want to make a dome, or, you know, whatever we want to make, but we can't make the decisions ourselves, we need to have approval. So, we make our proposal to the Cultural Heritage Department, right?
Right, but that would mean substantially changing the exterior look of the building. I could be wrong, and there are going to be a lot more boards in the next, in the future. I find it hard to believe somebody would want to change the exterior look of the building. It's iconic, and it's, it deserves to be kept the way it is, and that is why I'm here.
Yes.
Because I don't want that to happen.
So, ironically enough, I received an email from a student complaining about the air conditioning because the swim gym, do we, how? There's no air conditioning at all, so I had to, you know.
That's, Judy mentioned that, that's not an issue at all. You wouldn't have to go to anybody, you wouldn't have to get any permission, you ju, I mean, if somebody decided to put the compressor on the roof in the front facing Lasky and Spalding, or whatever, Lasky and, my God, anyway.
Yeah.
You get the idea. That would be a problem. I don't believe anybody would make that decision to make them visible. I would think they'd probably be hidden behind the building. So, if that were the case, there'd be no review by Cultural Heritage, there'd no review by design review. It would just happen.
Only the outside.
It would happen that you're.
So, only the exterior, correct?
Only the exterior. Anything on the inside could re.
Including the pool itself?
Including the pool itself.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dr. Stern?
Not much to add, but thank you so much. I love your longstanding, decades-long commitment to our city, and these are very important things to bring to our attention, and I thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about this.
Thank you.
Well.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention.
My pleasure.
I've had a lot of time to think about it. There's a couple points that, one that has been made, and one that, maybe it's been made, and I might have been distracted a little bit by trying to get the board on the next issue, but I would love to know, is this the time to do it? In other words, we're in the midst of finishing the high school, and we're in the midst of having to deal with areas around the high school, and our focus is on, right now, getting finished at the high school. So, my question is, why now? Maybe in the future, yes, but I would love to see the school finished, and we are all finished with the high school, before we were to ask for this to be a historical landmark. That's my one thing, and the only thing that.
Can I answer that question? Why?
I beg pardon?
Could I answer that question?
Sure.
So, why now? As I've mentioned a couple of times, this commission's been around 13 years, nobody's come to you with it. Every year, more and more people of the older generation are leaving the city for whatever reason, and younger people are going to have less and less of an idea of the iconic history of the building, and the longer we wait, the less interest, in my opinion, there's going to be. In 13 years, nobody's come to the board and said, "Let's do this." Why now? Why not now? I don't think, I know it's not in the plans of the current construction, so it's not going to be affected by anything that's been approved or financed, and I would think it's going to be a while till that area is addressed again. So, why not now?
Okay, well, thank you for your explanation on that. I have, I'm very slow to move on things, but the other thing that is concerned to me is that we, as a board of five people, having been voted on by our constituents, are making a decision that I feel, I don't know, I'm not comfortable being a person to make that decision for everybody in the city and for all the members of the community. I don't know, I just, that's just my own personal, I mean, if it's such that there's a strong desire to do it, I doubt that I would stand in the way to do it, Andy, but right now, I am a little bit reluctant to be the person that wants to make the board responsible for making this a historical landmark, because it's not owned by the city, this is owned by the school district, it's owned by the school. So, I, I know, I don't know how people want their homes are made, how they're nominated, you know, if they make it the nomination themselves, or that somebody nominates the home for them, but I have a little bit of reservation about making our school swim gym a historic landmark on behalf of myself. That's just my own comment. I like the idea of doing it, I'm just very concerned about doing that at this time. So, as I say, I will not stand in the way if the board makes that decision that they want to do it, but I do share that concern that this is a big decision to make in terms of the school board for the community.
I just think landmarking ensures that future generations will appreciate its historical significance, and as time goes on, there's not a lot written on this. I researched it, as I said, this past week. There's modern point, but not even a Wikipedia page for it. It's only mentioned in the Beverly High Wikipedia page, and the more time that goes on, the less of us are going to be around that even knows what It's a Wonderful Life is, even knows what the WPA was, even knows that it's probably the only one in the world, and I'd hate to see anything happen to it. And I think if we keep waiting, we're going to keep losing memories.
Okay, a quick question. When was it started? As I recall, it was started in 1936, is that correct?
It was, I don't know, started, it was finished in '39. I don't know when the construction began.
I wonder how we were so lucky to get.
I think things went a lot quicker.
Federal government to build the swim gym in Beverly Hills. That's an amazing feat.
It's well-known. I mean, people, tourists come to see it, it's.
And I have to tell you, and since I've been on the board, we've poured a lot of money into that swim gym to make it work with the floor and the, everything else that's going on.
Because you want to preserve it.
Yeah, we have to preserve it, I know that.
And.
So, it's going to be preserved.
As younger people come around, they're going to be less and less interested.
All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for listening, and.
I'm sure we will, at some point, make a decision and get back to you.
I hope you see it my way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 10B, 10N, and 10O, and I've polled them, the board, is there any other that you would like to be polled? If not, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 10B, 10N, and 10O. Can I get a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern.
Mrs. Marcus, you forgot public comment.
Oh, wait, I'm so sorry. Oh, that's tight. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a few people that would like to make a comment on the public comment. Is Lily Cosner here?
No.
Is she on the Zoom?
Nope.
No. Sabrina Slaughter, are you here?
She is not here, and she is not on Zoom.
Okay. Katie Warren, you want to speak?
I do.
But Sabrina's not here, unfortunately, I hope that won't affect you too much.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Wait, Sabrina just logged on to the Zoom. Is she on? Did she go through?
Is she on?
She just texted me saying she was on. We can just let her know that I can do it in three. That way, she doesn't have to worry about it. Okay. One of these days, I'm going to come up here and not be nervous, but that day is not today. All right, are you ready? Dear members of the board and Dr. Chernus, my name is Catherine Warren, and I am the president of BHEA. At the last board meeting, I spoke about the importance of protecting teachers during parent-teacher conferences. I wholeheartedly agree with the board and Dr. Chernus that the vast majority, 98% of these conferences, go smoothly. These meetings often strengthen relationships between parents and teachers, enhance communication between teachers and students, and sometimes even improve the dynamic between a parent and a child. However, my comments were focused on the remaining 2% of conferences that do not go as intended, those that go sideways for a variety of reasons. In my remarks, I respectfully requested that the revised language in policy 5020 be brought back for a second reading, as is customary. Within seconds of that request, a motion was made to waive the second reading. Board members have previously expressed frustration when similar requests for tabling an item or adding a study session were denied. BHEA firmly believes that our district functions best when it follows established protocols, especially when those protocols are designed to allow for input from multiple stakeholders. The decision to waive the second reading sent a message that the teacher's voice was not welcome in that discussion. At this meeting, BHEA respectfully requests that Item C under board discussion, standards-based instruction and environment be tabled. It is our understanding that the board recently completed a review of the 6,000 series policies and made the necessary updates. Currently, board policy 6144, controversial issues, is in place, and this policy already addresses the intent and purpose of standard-based instruction and environment. I'm positive board members are aware that the collective bargaining agreement takes precedence over board policy. Article nine of the agreement includes a dedicated section on controversial issues with clear guidelines for how these topics should be addressed with students from TK through 12th grade. If the board wishes to revise or clarify language related to controversial issues, the appropriate venue for that discussion is the bargaining table. In closing, BHEA requests that the agenda item, standards-based instruction environment, be tabled and brought to the bargaining team for any changes in language. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Marcus, do you have one more public comment? Andrew Katz?
And, where is he? I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. Andrew?
Katz.
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 Okay, thank you, Mr. Katz. Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know what seat I'm supposed to take, but sit here. All right. Members of the board, Dr. Chernus. It's on. Members of the board, Dr. Chernus, my name's Andrew Katz. I have a rising second grader and a rising fourth grader here in BHUSD. I want my kids to be ready for the world outside the classroom. I want them to be able to navigate in society, to be inclusive in their interactions with others. BHUSD is an inclusive place, and that's why I'm glad my kids go here. The standard-based instructional environment draft, however, opens the door to anti-inclusivity. Schools are a safe place for kids to try different things, open their minds to different thoughts and perspectives, and feel supported, just like our homes are. This policy proposal can shut people out based on what other people are willing to accept. As Mrs. Warren said, the policy itself is already covered in existing board policies. Do we really need more regulation? Teachers on the front lines, they're with our kids the most. We need to trust their professional judgment. This policy would cause them to be constantly looking over their shoulder, second-guessing what they do. If they're, wow, I wish I could read my writing. If they, no, if they're constantly in fear, that's what that says, if they're constantly in fear, our kids are going to feel it, and it's going to affect their education negatively. Please stop its implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katz. Okay. I will now, are there any more comments? I will return now, and the consent calendar, we had a motion by Mrs. I will return now, and the consent calendar, we had a motion by Mrs. Marcus to pull, to consent without Items Number 10B, 10N, and O. I'd like a second to the motion, did I get that from you, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can I hear approval of the consent calendar without those items, please? Please, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So I can ask to pull Item 10B by you, Mrs. Sabag?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the personnel report. Well, he has two sections.
We are on, we've done, we've approved the consent calendar. We are now with a motion on B1, a certificated item, and we're waiting for whoever pulled it, which is Mrs. Sabag.
So you want me to start?
To give us her reasons or what she wants to know.
Okay.
That's what I want.
Okay, so in regards to the substitutes, we had a discussion in regards to swing. So my concern is, and even in the Q and A when I asked, we had brought swing on in order to make it priority, to use swing. And I am seeing that, I feel like we've added more substitutes, and they're starting, you know... Can you explain, Dr. Seaman, in between? Because what is it exactly we're approving? Are we approving another year of substitutes to use? Or are we approving... Please explain the course of...
Yep, so on the certificated report, you'll see, I think, online item. Sorry about that, I have it open on my digital copybook.
By the way, Dr. Seaman, I received the revised version, but did you also receive a revised? Yeah, I received, yes.
Yep, so what we're discussing is the day-to-day substitute teachers. What it is, is it's approval of a pool of substitute teachers that have already been cleared through our personnel services or human resources department. This list, there's no new names that haven't been previously already in the system for us. And each year, if a substitute teacher had served less than 10 days within our district, they were automatically notified by myself, truly, the admin assistants in HR who run the ship, that we were removing them from the list. They were no longer part of our BHUSD substitute pool. From that, each year, we do, if we aren't utilizing them, they will be peeled off. But they also receive an insurance letter back before March 15th that they would be signing on for the following school year. And that's through the county office, so that way, you know, if, let's say, we didn't bring them back for some reason, there's always unemployment laws and issues regarding that. But so this is our current, and this has always been the current list of pool that we have. Now, the question always is, and what we're working and have been working on since April, is always identifying credentialed subs in the area that we need to ensure instructional continuity. And that is part of why we're able, and I think the Board of Education forced swing education, is that we have those. We, again, as an example, summer school, we ran into a situation with special education, and we needed a special education-specific sub, and we were able to secure that person through swing education.
So can I ask you, if we do not approve the list here, which is like 53 subs, what are the alternatives? If we approve it, and what is the alternative if we don't approve it? What's the difference in other words?
Yep, so without approval, we basically walk into the school year reliant on only an external organization. And that would make me nervous as the educational leader side of the House, because there are examples where we needed long-term subs. Unfortunately, we had a teacher pass away this year where we needed a long-term sub, and we were able to pull from this list that found a highly qualified... One of our board members had a daughter in the class to fill for the remainder of the school year. And that's where we look for really those long-term subs on that. And this list provides us with a wide variety from different grade levels, different content areas and subject areas. If we were not to approve, that potentially runs us into litigation, truth. It could be, they could file unemployment charges for the nonapproval.
So it's our recommendation, based on negotiated agreement with BHEA and Education Code, that we approve these subs. It does not require us to use them.
Yes.
And since I've been here, we've primarily been relying on the swing. There's a handful of subs that we do use on this list quite often, and we want to continue that. But the reason they're on this list is because they've worked over 10 days during the school year, and based on the agreement and Education Code, they're being recommended.
Yeah, just really quickly, my understanding for bringing swing was specifically because we were going a different direction. So right now, we're going in both directions. So that's why it's typically confusing that we need to approve something that we're going to be using another company just for that.
Well, I think if we don't use these subs, right, a majority of them, the next year at this time, you'll see a lot less. These are the subs that worked the minimum requirement, and therefore need to be approved. We do not have to use them.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Many of the subs on this list have been with us for many years and are doing a very fine job. And so if we don't approve the list, they lose that... We have to approve the list as a whole, obviously. I'm not going to go through 53 names, but please... So I think, but it's up to the subs when they're called, the teachers when they're calling subs, to make sure that they pick a good sub from the list or go to swing.
Who picks the subs? Is it the teacher or the administration?
The teacher generally gets the right to pick the sub.
Yep, and so twofold, though. So we, some of our teachers do have a great relationship, because there are some retired teachers on this list that have taught both... Similar to Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Marcus served as a substitute teacher. There's numerous retired teachers on this list that are coming back to be able to serve and will only serve if it's in their content area. You know, there's a social studies teacher on here that says, "If there's a social studies spot opening, I'll come back and be able to fill, but I won't fill anything else." And then outside of that, we always will go to swing where we're able to select that specific content area, that specific grade level. Like I stated, the special education is an area where we're always seeking substitute teachers because there's such a drought of them.
Right. The only problem that I have is the reason we hired swing is because we want the specific specialty for that course. And we have received many complaints about substitutes being babysitting the students. And that's my concern. So I don't want to just fill the gap just because, I guess we have to if we don't have anybody, but I want to make sure that we use the company that we chose, and we want to see how efficient they are.
That has been happening. And I anticipate this list next year much smaller, to just the best ones that we typically use.
So I think that, unless, Mrs. Manichari, any comment, or are you...
No, I think my question was answered, which is simply that as we move more towards swing and towards those subs who really fill in the gaps for us in a very...
They won't get their 10 days in.
Yeah, in a very intentional way, that by this time next year, we would be having a different conversation about it.
I wonder, is there an agreement with BHEA, though, on using this list as opposed to going to swing? Is there, and there's nothing in any writing of that? Okay, I just want to make sure that we are protected in that respect. Okay, all right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Mrs. Sabag? Are you voting yes or no?
Well, that's fine, you're entitled to vote no. It's okay.
No, okay, so it passes four to one, Mrs. Sabag is a no vote. Okay, the next item on there is Item 10N, Approval of Agreement with Communicate Incorporated. I will move for the approval of the agreement with Communicate. Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichari. I believe that was pulled by you, Mrs. Sabag, you have something on that?
What is it, 10N?
10N. It's Agreement with Communicate.
Oh, it's the kosher food?
No, that's O.
That's O.
Which I pulled.
That's approval O, but it must have been changed because the thing that I have here on O is approval of kosher meals.
So that's what I was talking about.
Okay, so since we pulled that one, can I get, I've got a motion to approve it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to move for the approval of the agreement with LA Kosher Grill Incorporated for kosher meals. And I'll make a first motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, that you, Mr. Stewart?
And that's the one I pulled.
Yeah.
Okay, this was also pulled by both Mrs. Manichari and, I believe, did you pull this one? Because you were pulling the same one.
Yeah.
Just the number in your book is different.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Manichari.
Thank you so much. So I pulled this because I thought it was an interesting concept to allow the vendor to use our site, which is a case of first impression for us. So I think that it warrants a conversation. So I just wanted to highlight that A for my clients. Next, I'm concerned about having only one candidate in general. I understand that there is a second candidate who brought in the proposal after the RFP period expired. I don't know and have not interacted with either of these candidates. So for me, it doesn't matter. I just know that when we are trying to improve our food services program, it probably would be better to maybe, if we're required to put the RFP bid out there for a second time, to give the second vendor the opportunity. I think that is not a bad idea to do. And then I would be interested in food services, you know, if tasting both of them. The vendor that we currently have, I come from the hospitality industry. I know that hospitality and food services is about penny pinching. So I understand the challenges, but it's not been a perfect situation. And so we've had a lot of, hi there. We've had a lot of conversations about our food services program. And so I personally would love to see this get put on hold and to give the other vendor an opportunity to step in and show us what they've got. Next, let's talk about the dollars and cents here because if we're giving a vendor $2.65 per meal, then what are we really expecting in return for that meal? You know, is our budget for them correct? Would it be better that we allow them to use our facilities and give them the full amount and get more? I don't know, because I haven't seen the other vendor's proposal. And so it's really hard to compare apples to apples, I've only got one apple here, you know? And so I just think that since this is an item that has garnered so much discussion within the larger ecosystem of our food services programming, I'd love to see this flushed out a little bit more. And then in addition to that, I kind of would like to see a proposal from food services in general about how, what is the vision going forward for this coming year based on the extensive conversations that we've had as a board and the instruction that the board has given now on more than one occasion, which is to improve in general. And so I feel like we need to know what the whole thing is going to look like before we approve one of the pieces. I also am very curious to understand, why are we not allowing the parents to contribute to food services so that their students can get better food? So is it that we have to provide, is it that we're only limited to using the dollars the government is giving us? What if we want to add on to that? What if we want to make it better? I think that what we should be doing is first coming forward with a vision of what do we want our food services to provide, and then backing into the dollars. Here, I feel like the dollars are backing into the food, and I don't like to work that way in general. You know, that's, I don't want the dollars to make the food work for it, I want the food to make the dollars work. And so I'm taking an issue with our whole approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichari. Mr. Stewart?
No comment.
Mrs. Sabag?
Yeah, so thank you, Mrs. Manichari, I agree. I just want to see also the other proposal, if we can allow them to give us in a proposal, that would be great, just to see the difference, because I understand that they were late on it.
Yeah, the proposal came in about 28 minutes late. I did attach it to the board Q and A, there's, you can see the proposal. It's okay, no problem, no worries. And they came in at $9 a meal. So it was $9 per meal.
But that's $9 at Option A.
Yeah, so that's...
Not using our facility.
And also, in their proposal, they didn't even put any language about the shared use of the facility, where they were only putting a proposal for the $9 per meal, and they would just be doing delivery only. So we were asking for a proposal that would give those two options, whether they can use this or we can do delivery. The winning proposal that followed the guidelines set forth, which, you know, they met the deadline, they did put those two options in the proposal, giving us that flexibility.
And I'm also wondering, if we do use the kitchen at Hawthorne, maybe we can also see if we can get a chef or somebody to use the kitchen on a regular basis rather than bring in an outside company. Maybe it'll be the same pricing, we could maybe figure that out.
And I think...
Because that way, the food will be, it would be easier to control or, you know, as long as we have staff, just like we're doing with, you know, with the cafeteria.
That was the goal in doing this. For one, to get better monitoring and control over the food service, because the current contract, which is Kosher Foods, they would deliver the food as is, and you get what you get. Sometimes it's not always aligned, that's all I'll say. Having it prepared and done here, we have, we'll have staff in there with them to be able to monitor the food before it gets delivered into the sites. So that was the purpose of this. We could look into, like, the cost of the contract and possibly bringing in an actual kosher cook-type person that would come in and do that, but that would be a piece of it.
Because this could be an option, and then we can look at other options because we still have time. And this can always be, you know, done anyways.
Yeah.
Because we're working with them. There's just a few concerns in what's happening.
Understood.
Okay, great, thank you.
No, I have no further questions or concerns.
Okay, so right now, just to review, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agreement with LA Kosher Grill. And the agreement is to use Option A as the $4.75 a meal. So if you approve the Option A, $4.75, then you will go, and we have approval of the agreement with LA Kosher Grill.
Marcus?
Yes.
Sorry, I have the question that Mr. Yano would like to...
May I say?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
This has been a project that I've been trying to work on. Sorry. This has been a project I've been working on for many years. It's not necessarily 265. We would be providing, so the vendor would be providing the kosher supervision and the staffing to prepare those meals. What we would provide as a district is we would provide the food, the recipes, the oversight. Our chef coordinator from the district would be over there oversight of the meals to make sure they're done properly. We're also going to make sure the portions are done correctly. The food is going to be more like the food we serve. And again, I'd love to welcome everybody to come see the food we serve, it's very wonderful. It's very wonderful. And so that's, that's what I, so doing the 265 is, is pretty much for the labor. Now. No, now.
So we're looking at a 265 that's not really 265 for Plan B?
And that's the one I want to go with because also the other issue is we have school-approved products, like 51% whole grain bread, 51%. Like there's certain products that are school-approved that our vendor does not have access to. So I'm not getting 100% what I, what I need for my complacency sometimes. So it's better if we use our products so we can make sure we're always 100% compliant.
So you're saying we should go with A?
I'm saying we should go with the 265. The 475 is a backup in case something happens.
But 265 doesn't pay for everything that goes into the meal.
Well, the rest of the price for the meal is coming from the food services budget. So for instance, I'm going to be ordering from Cisco and I can get Cisco hamburger buns. I can get kosher labeled products from Cisco and I'm going to bring those over to the kitchen and our vendor will have a consistent supply of products that are consistent and readily available.
Those are the subsidized foods that you could bring in?
Correct.
Okay.
And like I also have commodity foods, so like canned beans. I've got pastas, rice that come from the state, which are kosher labeled that I'm able to use and they're school-approved products.
So we already getting those, so the 265 would be added to the cost of, that's what it's going to cost us because we're getting subsidized for the meal?
Yeah, the main food cost would be the meat. That's going to be like the main cost of the food.
But can I ask, Dr. Hasty, where did the other vendor come in on option B?
They didn't have another option.
Okay, but the thing is, where did, where did we post this? Because essentially, option B is just a supervision fee. And so if you're only doing it for supervision.
It's, sorry, it's supervision and people cooking and making the food. So I'm not, I'm not providing a staff member.
There's staffing and.
Staffing and kosher supervision. So pretty much it's providing the staffing for making the meals and I, my department provides the oversight and the recipes. I've already got the recipes in our Healthy Pro.
This supplies, this supplies, foods, recipes and oversight. And let me ask you, the variety of food that has come in through this program has been different than the variety that you've provided recently, much of which has been fantastic. The tuna Caesar salad is a big hit. There's a lot of big hits. So what, what do you see as the vision? If you're providing BHUSD supplies, the food, recipes and oversight, so what, what plan, what items do you plan on them cooking for us?
So the vision is because a lot of the kosher students will eat our parve and our vegetarian entrees. So the vision is for this to provide the meat entrees. So spaghetti with meat sauce.
Right.
Pretty much beef burrito, like those kind of things. And we would still continue to provide the parve and vegetarian. So the students would still have those options, but we're already providing beef, spaghetti with meat sauce for our regular, non-kosher students. Now the kosher students would have that option and it would be very similar to what we're already providing.
Okay. But then that means, for example, no more, I can't even believe I'm having this conversation.
We're going to have.
No more kebabs in Chorash.
Well, if they're popular, we can still do the kebabs.
Got you, but for everybody, is that what you're trying to?
We would be doing them in our kitchen with our supplies, but the vendor would be making them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Carefully, the cost of this will be charged to the district cafeteria budget. How much, so what will the district be paying for this particular, if we take Plan B? What does the district wind up paying in addition to the 265?
Are you considering general fund or are you considering cafeteria fund?
About the fact that the district, our budget.
Dr. Hasty?
Yeah, yeah, remember, we did about 200 kosher meals per day last year. So this does not touch our general fund at all. Just remember that. This is all through, we're getting reimbursed and it does not come out of our general fund at all. We get full reimbursement for this.
So I made a mistake when I said the approval of the LA Kosher and they're suggesting going with Plan B.
One option.
So I.
But Muna didn't even, from what I'm understanding, Muna, even though their bid, their bid came 30 minutes late, they did not even provide a supervision and cooking rate. They only went for option A.
And then what about if we want to try and see how much it'll cost if we have our own cook and supervision?
Well, that's what she's saying, that the.
So if we just get the cook and the, no, but it's still going with kosher.
Well, she's saying that option B is what, and she's going to bring in staples from the other kitchen that she can bring in.
Right, but I'm saying what if the labor is with us, including the supply and everything and the labor?
How about, can we try this model for the remainder of summer school?
I would have to speak with the vendor and see, he has to kosherize the kitchen and we have to make sure.
You already probably are under contract.
We're actually not serving kosher food during the summer school right now. We're serving like vegetarian and.
So I have a question. If we have a supervisor to supervise the kitchen, we have to do that anyways because the kitchen needs to be supervised. I understand that we're telling them to do it, but what if we pay for that and then we pay for the food and we pay for somebody actually cooking? What would that end up costing us?
I've looked into that and my quote from last year was $90,000 a year for kosher supervision on a daily basis at the kitchen.
Okay, so I'd like.
That was supervision only. That was not including labor.
Let's divide that, how does that go, 90?
How much do we currently pay for the vendor for a kosher meal?
$4.75 a meal.
And what do you think the cost will be for a meal under this plan?
It should be very similar, if not better, but I can't guarantee that because we're using commodity produce and commodity, we're also using commodity vegetables also.
And we are running a surplus for the nutrition program. So even if we had to make up the difference, we have enough for surplus to make up the difference, which means it wouldn't touch the general fund or be a cost, additional cost of general fund.
Okay, I think we've probably exhausted the session on this. I'd like to call for the motion. I'm going to do this as a roll call vote.
Well, Dr. Chernus, what are you recommending looking ahead? I know we've been dealing with so much other stuff. Is this something that needs to be signed today in June, considering we have five, six weeks until school starts? I mean, I know that you've got to prepare and you're up against the clock. I'm only asking these questions because I want to set all of us up for success.
So I'm not an expert on this.
Yeah.
But I will say that from, from what I've seen, Ms. Sabag, Ms. Manichari, you've spent quite a bit of time fielding concerns about the food service program. So my recommendation would be to table this at this time and spend more time on this and bring it back in July and make sure that all the questions are answered. And we'll make a decision in July.
Okay.
I mean, the motion.
So are we withdrawing our motion or?
I'm going to withdraw my motion and then I'm going to go back to Mr. Stewart and ask him to withdraw his motion and without a motion for this fails for lack of a motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
And I have withdrawing my motion, so item O, approval, well, it was an in here and it's O on this sheet, so I'm not sure exactly, Chrissy, what's going on. I understand the confusion. The approval of the agreement with LA Kosher Grill Incorporated for kosher meals fails for lack of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to educational services. I would like a motion for the approval of the 2025-26 Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP. Mr., Dr. Seaman, do you want to make any comments before?
Yeah, I just, for the community at large, some people may ask, what is this document? The next two documents, actually, also the indicators. What the LCAP is, is it's a combination of antiquated data. So for those that have listened in years past, you'll see that you have data from 2023 and then data from 2024. You've also seen though, over those times, we have worked through different things like our strategic plan, providing updates to the Board of Education, utilized with our principals, doing study sessions throughout the course of time. That has influenced some of those decisions. But this document truly was created based off feedback, SWOT analysis, utilizing different parent groups back in 2022 because it is a four-year document. All school districts do have to do this. For a community-funded school district, ours is simply less than. We have to just demonstrate to the California Department of Education that we support our subpopulations such as our EL students, you'll see our Title I students, our homeless population, our foster youth. So it is not representative of all the things that we do in the district. It is not representative of our full budget within the district. This is indicating in a compliance document for us to justify to the California Department of Education that we do support our subpopulations in the following ways and we've earmarked funds for that. So an example on that document would be we support our, in 2023, one's area was we had a attendance issue with some of our Hispanic students and we've addressed that through different various ways like PBIS. And so you'll see in 2024, that data had decreased. So unfortunately, I do not have your 2025 data yet, but what's great for those that are at home watching, we have released information to you. So if your student did take the LCAP or the CASP exam, you got instructions to be able to view your scores through ARES today. We actually were able to release those that we've received. We just don't have all of them yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
I will call for a motion for the approval of the 2025-26 Global Control Accountability Plan. Can I get a motion, please? I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Okay, are there any comments on it? Hearing none, discussion. I'll call for the approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, aye. That's a 5 and 0. And can you just, I just want to make one quick comment on the one we just passed. There is another thing called the LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding Formula for the communities that are not basic aid like we are. And luckily, we don't have to file that one, so we get a pass on that right now. So let's go on to the local. I don't know that this requires a motion. Is this just the local indicator self-reflection for 24 and 25? If there's any comments or any things that anybody wanted to say about it, Mrs. Manichari?
I have a comment also.
I'm going to have a.
Oh, my only, we're still on the LCAP, right?
No, we're, we just passed.
Oh, we're, okay, no, I have no comments to that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
No comment.
Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, I would like to go through it a little bit because I read the whole thing and because we had our BHEA president come speak and bring up the parent teacher conference, I'd like to highlight a few things. So basically, in the local indicator self-reflection, can you explain that, Dr. Seaman?
Sorry. Yes, absolutely. So again, from, for those that are at home, you can always view this information on the California dashboard. In the California dashboard, again, unfortunately, this is slightly antiquated information, but based on previous year's survey results, our SARC reports, which are School Accountability Report Cards that are also posted on our website, in addition to FIC, our construction and all that reports, we have to hit certain benchmarks and thresholds for the California Department of Education. And so this is indicating to the Department of Education that we do meet the threshold set by them for these indicators, such as we do provide instructional materials for all of our students. We even, we even take it a step further. We provide them instructional materials at home, so kids have a copy in class, copy at home. Parent engagement, there's a question around that. Outside of last week's, or two weeks ago discussion, questions are, do we provide parent universities? And we do. So in the LCAP, we offered over 10 different evening events in town halls. We also, Dr. Chernus, myself, Dr. Hasty and many of you participate in all of our PTA, PTSAs and BGF and even attend their board meetings to provide updates. And so there's multiple ways that we've engaged with our community. It's an insurance policy and that's what this is for.
Can I ask a quick, I'll come right back to you. I just, this is for clarification. It sells, the indicator self-reflection is for 24 and 25.
Yep.
And yet, on the document I have, it says 25 and 26. That's because we haven't done 25 and 26 yet. Is this is what we're hoping to do or is this just a, I just wanted to.
No, that's, it's, it's, we're submitting going into 25, 26. So when you look at the dashboard, that's what our dashboard data is. So an example is when we look at our current dashboard, all you can see is 24.
Okay.
Yep. And then next year, you'll see these indicators. It won't be released until November, but this will be reflective on that dashboard and our new CASP data. Again, everything's always a year behind by the time you get through Laco and all the way up to the state.
Right. So, okay, so I just want to highlight a few things. So you had to do a narrative.
Yep.
And part of the narrative, they're basically asking you regarding the dashboard and your rating, your rating how the district is doing. So it says, these coordinated efforts reflect our commitment to continuous improvement and delivering high-quality, standard-based instruction to every student.
Yep.
And I wanted to highlight the rating system, which you have under the practices. And it says to rate the progress in supporting staff to learn about each family's strengths, cultures, language and goals of their children. It says to engage in a two-way, two-way communication between families and educators using language that is understandable and accessible to family. You rated us a five, right? And so they were talking about also, you were saying that there is parent, teacher, student conferences. So the reason I'm highlighting this, because nowhere in the report have you mentioned parent, teachers, administration conferences. So I would like to highlight that because it was brought up again. If it wasn't, I wouldn't highlight it. So it just goes on and on. As you know, Dr. Seaman, it continues with professional learning, supporting the teachers and principals to improve a school's capacity to partner with families, right? And the policies and programs and teachers to meet with families and students. So it's not saying teachers, administrators, assistant principal to meet with students and families. So that's important to highlight and that is the reason we voted the way we voted last time. So I appreciate that and, and that's it. Thank you.
Well, can I say something? But Sagali, I, I see what you're saying about that.
Dr. Stern?
I see what you're saying about that, but it also doesn't say admin won't be there or shall not be there, so.
No, this is in a regular basis so that the teachers learn about the families. When the admins are there, and you said it yourself, when the admins are there, they're strictly there because there's an issue. Either it's, you know, some kind of issue with the student, either in the learning, any kind of capacity intervention. But when you're having a regular teacher-student conference, as, as Dr. Seaman went ahead and evaluated, the admins are not supposed to be there. Nowhere is it written that, it just, basically, the Los Angeles County, you know, department, local indicator self-reflection, their question, they are questioning this, correct? And you're rating it. So their question is directly related to teachers and parents. Their question does not say admin. So it's not Dr. Seaman writing it, it's them writing it and it's Dr. Seaman rating it a five.
I think that it's another issue and I, I just, I guess what I'm saying is it's not saying by default they can't be there.
Did you read the whole report? I read every word.
I went through it, but it doesn't mean by default. I mean, I think it's a different issue. It's not saying like they can't be there. But they're evaluating something totally different. So I think maybe we're talking about different subjects.
That, no, there, when you say two-way communication, that means they can't be there. They're not supposed to be there. Okay? It doesn't say three-way communication, four-way communication, bring everybody involved or who you want. It says two-way engagement here. School sites to engage in two-way communication between families and educators.
But that doesn't prohibit them.
Educators can include administrators also.
They are rating if we are doing this. They are rating, they want us to rate ourselves if we implement this.
But according to the statement, it just leaves it very vague.
No, it's written over and over. I could read the whole thing. I don't want to take your time. I want to make that highlight very understood. Very understood, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the approval of, I made a motion to approve the 25-26 adopted budget.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion, comments, questions?
The adopted budget.
The approval of the adopted budget. Okay.
Just, I'm just clarifying. This is the, the one that was presented last time, and we're adopting it this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is for approval. It was already presented.
The total number of money that will be our revenue and the total money to attend. We are over $103 million in budget and something like that. A total amount, big number.
I don't think we're over by $103 million.
I'm not saying, no, that the total, the total, the budget itself, all I'm pointing out in this, if I can get out of this one.
But our, our total budget is in excess of $100 million. I hear you.
And then the revenue is in excess of that. So we're doing, so far, I think we're okay. That's all I wanted to go down. Okay, so I'll call for the motion. All those in favor of the adopted budget, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, that passes. Okay, planning and facilities. Facilities master plan, presentation. And who are we going to hear from today? Ah.
Oh, no, this, no.
Good evening. So, yeah, we're going to present our facilities master plan. It's our first presentation to you. And I have here with me Mr. Hazam, Hazam Rabadi from Canon Design. He's going to present the document they put together in a, in a presentation, and I'm going to let him take it from here, and I'll be here to help answer questions.
It says host disabled participant sharing.
Can you allow screen sharing, please?
I did share my screen with you. That's okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, let me try again, see, is it giving me? There we go. Okay, great. Hopefully, everyone can see that. So I wanted to first start off, my name is Hazam Rabadi. I am the managing principal for Canon Design. It's Los Angeles office. We specialize in education facilities throughout the state, and we really appreciate the opportunity to present our findings in this facilities master plan for you. So, and if you want to interrupt me at any point during, please, please do. Agenda real quick on the discussion. We're going to go with a quick overview, talk about some of the assessments, findings, the surveys, and then the report. This presentation is not the report itself. The report is a much longer document, but we can jump into that as questions arise. So quick overview. What is a facilities master plan? You know, some people sometimes mistake that for plans that are going to be, you know, we're going to actually, you know, say, you need a building. Yes?
I just want to stop you for one second before you start to argue all of the same thing. This has nothing to do with actually the bond construction program, correct?
Uh, no, it has nothing to do with our current bond. No, this is for planning for the future.
This is above and beyond the bond.
Correct.
That's why I want to make sure that we have the agenda.
Yes, thank you. So facilities master plans are not about necessarily looking at site plans for each campus, et cetera. They're really an assessment of the facilities that you currently have, where they might be lacking in terms of area, where they might be lacking in terms of conditions, and those sorts of things. And really, providing, as this slide talks about, responsible stewardship of the facilities. What we find with our clients regularly is, when they end up falling behind in that stewardship, is when problems occur. You know, buildings constantly need renovations and updates, particularly with school districts, where you have buildings that range in age, you know, you know, 10, 20, 50, 100 years in many instances with clients we work with. So it's to look at aging buildings. Is it worth it to spend money renovating them? Is it more cost-effective to replace them? If they're going to be replaced or renovated, you know, we don't want to spend good money after bad, so we don't want to spend money that we might have to replace again later. So that, that's the idea of, of planning ahead. We also wanted to look, obviously, the district is seeing reduced enrollment, and obviously many of our clients have limited resources in regards to their ability to maintain facilities. So we want to make sure that money is spent well. And it also aligns with the facilities master plan guidelines required by Proposition Two funding.
I just want to point out, that's a key element. In order for us to gain the Prop Two funding that we applied for, we have to have this master plan in place.
So this slide might be a little startling. It doesn't mean you need to come up with $521 million tomorrow to do these facilities, but in our estimation, that is what would need to be done over the period of this facilities master plan. We look at the, you know, not just what is needed today. In most cases, it's not what's needed today. Your bond program will actively take care of that. What it's looking at is, you know, one equipment might need to be replaced five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now. But that just goes to show you the level of investment that needs to continuously happen with facilities. So this includes, as you see on the slide, recommendation for $356 million in building improvements and other $165 million in educational enhancements. So we looked at every campus. This was the rubric that was created in working with your team. It's one we've used for a long time. We, we do modify it and tweak it depending on our clients' needs. So this is definitely unique to Beverly Hills Unified. But it looks at, you know, rub, you know, a score of one would be low priority, rubric two would be something that would need to be implemented within the next 10 years or so, rubric three, we feel it should be implemented within seven years, rubric four, three, et cetera. So you can all read that. And then with costs associated with it. So the assessment, what is the assessment cover? So as you see here with these slides, it, it looks at all aspects. It looks at the plans themselves, it looks at the buildings themselves. We've visited every single building within the district, and when possible, nearly every single classroom within the district, or not classroom room, not just classrooms themselves. There were instances where maybe rooms were, were locked for security reasons that we weren't able to get to, but I would say, you know, over 95% of the spaces we were able to visit. And we rate them on numerous categories. Building exterior, energy, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, does it meet code? So, you know, that, you know, sometimes people are like, well, it was built 10 years ago. It's okay that it doesn't meet code. Well, no, that's true, but if you are to renovate it, say, in another 10 years, you would have to bring it up to the current code. So we want to make sure we're evaluating for that. Building other has to do with any other elements of the buildings, as they have overhangs, canopies. We want to study those conditions. Building interiors, site, infrastructure. And then the last one is, is a unique one where it's looking at educational adequacy. So that, that one's a little bit different. It has to do with, does the space meet the needs that it's meant to, to serve? You know, what I've seen throughout my career, oftentimes, just to use an example, it wasn't really too much of an issue here at Beverly Hills, but you'll see science rooms that were just wedged into where there was a former classroom that just, they needed space, they put a science classroom in there. It didn't have, doesn't have any of the facilities for it. So we also tried to rate the rooms in terms of, are they meeting their needs? So does a science room have all the equipment that is needed to be a science room? Does a restroom meet the needs of, of the students? Is it too far a distance to walk? Those sorts of things. Okay, thank you. Key issues within the district include accessibility, code compliance, fire alarm compliance, hazardous material, and plumbing upgrades. I'm willing to talk about any of these if you have any questions about them, but for fire alarm compliance, that's one that we've been seeing quite a bit with our clients. The fire code continues to, to evolve pretty aggressively in the safety of children. And pretty much, every campus I've worked on, if it hasn't had their fire alarm upgraded in the last five years, it is probably not inadequate and code compliant. So we, we highly are always recommending to our clients that they, they stay, they invest in upgrading fire alarm systems. Because part of the problem is too, is when you piecemeal it, they don't communicate well with each other. And it actually becomes a staffing issue for, for our clients. Oftentimes, you'll have facilities team members having to deal with false alarms and those sorts of things. I know I have limited time, so I'm going to try to go quickly through some more of these. So, you know, Beverly Hills High School, for example, Building A has received sporadic upgrades. The swim gym, Building F, lacks an HVAC system and accessibility barriers. And the AHR management plan is, it continues to be an issue. The color coding at the bottom, you'll see, will vary from campus to campus. If it's red, it's critical for that particular building, and you move down the color code. So for example, the only red most critical was the ADA for Building A, for example, and that's why we highlighted it in this, in this matrix. Beverly Vista is in fairly good condition by standards. You, you might see some of these colors and say, well, what does that mean? It's fairly good condition. We expect buildings to need upgrades and to be addressed. That's part of why we need to invest in maintaining them. So when you see, you know, some yellows, but mostly greens and blues and grays, that, that's a good sign. It's a, what means it's a well, you know, it's a campus that's in good shape. And, and we'll just need sporadic investment over the years. El Rodeo Elementary School? Yeah, not, not much to say.
We're going to modernize that in the next year or so.
And that's what, and that's what this reflects. We had worked with the team, and so we did not, we did not waste our time saying, hey, spend money on it. You already know what you need to spend on it. So Hawthorne Campus, now it's a campus that's not being used, but if it were to be used, you know, it needs, it needs money spent on it, you know, so that, it's something. And even if it's, you know, we also see sometimes with the, with the inventory that our, our clients have, you know, they might have campuses that are not being used. It's hard to say spend money on facilities that aren't being used, but there's a chance in the future it might be used. It might be used for, for additional programs. It might be used for, yes.
When it says this building is not being used, we obviously are sitting here right now.
Well, yeah.
But there, but there are, apart from the JPA, we do have preschool kids here.
Yes.
We have the high school, the, the, the Reno's school is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I missed, you're, you're absolutely correct. It is being used, it's not being used as a school in its full capacity, as it was originally designed. That's, yeah, it's more. You, you, if you're going to keep this in, if you're going to keep this built, this campus in use, you're going to need to spend some money on it, even though students are not using it in its entirety. Yeah. And, you know, during our site walks too, this was one of the campuses that I personally visited, you know, there's work happening on this campus. This doesn't mean that work's not happening. You know, it's, we, we were trying to do it in real time, in terms of the, the recommendations. Horace Man, you know, you know, campus is in good shape, you know, very few things that just needed addressing. And once again, these are summaries of a much more detailed report I see. You have, it looks like probably the whole report printed out. I don't know if, if all of you do, so. So, yeah, so just to share with you, you know, that, this is obviously just that quick summary, so. And then we also reach out to the community to find out, you know, what's the community's feeling about the campus. A big part of, you know, running a, a, a school district is, is also, you know, how your community feels about you. So it's an important part of it, and you're going to see some interesting dynamics here that I'd like to point out. So first of all, we got very good turnout. You might think 248 responses, it's, it's better than much bigger districts we get. Getting people to respond to these things can be a challenge, so. And the, the best part is, I think we, we did get a, a fairly good split. You know, sometimes it's usually dominated by parents. The fact that we got 11.3% of our respondents are students is something we're really happy to see with the, within the district. That is not usually that high. Students do not want to respond to these things. So, yes.
There were only 248 responses for this year's survey.
Yes. Yes. As percentage-wise, it's, that's actually, yeah. Yeah.
So for this survey, we, we did, we tried to do a large public outreach, and we sent, we sent it out through via Parent Square. It was on our website. We also did another email blast, so we tried to get as many people on here as possible.
Yeah. One thing I think in terms of the outreach where I think you can see evidence of it, and this is just coming from our experience, is the amount of people who have had long history with, with Beverly Hills. So you see the, the bars, the gray bars along the bottom. It's a pretty even with people from two to five years of experience within the district, all the way to over 20 years of experience. That's wonderful. That, that is really great that we got that split, because we, we want a variety of opinion. We want to make sure that we're reflecting the community, so that, that is good. And then we also had teachers and counselors who responded at a high level, which is important. You know, our staff are here on a daily basis. We really want them to spend the majority of their career here if possible, you know, so it's, that, it's a good, good sign that they care. The, the key takeaways from the stakeholder perception, most stakeholders feel comfortable and secure and proud of Beverly Hills Unified School District facilities than those who do not. So you'll see, for example, the grand total of, I feel comfortable in our school buildings, it's 62%. I feel our school buildings are secure, 54%. I'm proud of our school buildings, 53%. There's still room for improvement, but it's good. I think we're, we're in a good place. The interesting thing that you start seeing in these numbers is the divergence from parents to students. And we, I have a bit of an observation as we get a little further in, that is just trying to read into the data. But you, you'll see, even, you know, employees though, you know, the numbers are a little bit lower. For example, am I proud of our school buildings than, say, the parents? Same with, you know, and the students kind of come in the middle there. So what is that? From our experience, that's probably a reflection of the day-to-day stuff. It's not about the aesthetics. As an architect, that goes against my nature, you know, the aesthetics matter a great deal to me, but the day-to-day stuff is very important too. If there's, if there's things that are, you know, failing or need repair, that's going to reflect poorly on somebody who's worked, dealing with the building day-to-day. Somebody who's driving by sees a beautiful historic building like Beverly Hills High School, you know, ah, what a beautiful building, and they'll say, say pride in it, but they might not necessarily know the challenges that that building is, is seeing. And we'll see, we see that somewhat reflected in other numbers too, as we move through. So here's another way of studying the data in terms of ranking, in terms of how important they are to, to school experience. So everybody ranked security and safety is high. You know, students, employees, parents, board members. That, that, so that, there's definitely consensus there, but you also see some jagged lines in here. For example, you'll see technology. Technology for the students was the lowest. You know, they don't care, they have their cell phone in their hand, they probably think that it's plenty enough, but, you know, but for employees, employees, you know, want to see more investment in, in technology. They want to embrace it. You have a staff that is, is progressive and wants to think about new ways of teaching. That's, that's a great sign. Another one where you see some, a, a sort of gap is in terms of advanced subjects. You see the students rate that as very important, and the staff maybe less so. So maybe there might be opportunities to provide more facilities that allow for advanced subjects. Building age and condition, fairly low on people's feelings. Physical and social, emotional wellness, fairly low on people's opinions. I would disagree with that one personally. I would have rated that one higher. But you see some, some interesting data coming out. Here's another one, in terms of areas, highest need for facility improvements. So you'll see, once again, a, a change. Science, students and employees rated that low, parents and board members rated that high. So in terms of the desire for STEM. And then you'll see, same thing with, you know, grounds and landscaping, you'll see a variety. So but beautification ranks amongst the lowest. So it's not about beautification, it's about what the facilities can do to support the program. Do you plan on staying with schools? We got a lot of positive feedback there. People want to stay in Beverly Hills Unified. That's a great sign. And then we asked them if the facilities were a key part of your decision in that. It wasn't. It's, people are happy. People want to be a part of this district. That's great. That's great. And stakeholder input takeaways, teacher and staff involvement, we, it was, we got a good variety, as I talked about. We got a strong call for improving diversity and fostering more inclusive culture, community and family engagement. There was a desire to make schools more community-oriented, you know, and then transparency and accountability. There is a call for greater transparency and accountability, and this is part of that. A good master plan that leads to stuff is going to be positive. Oh, I did want to point this, we did get positive feedback. Thank you for letting us participate from a parent, and keep working to meet your goals to improve and help our kids grow into confident community leaders. It's great to get that positive feedback. The report itself, you can dive in, it's a lot of dense data, but just walk you through how to read through it. Executive summary, first few pages describes what's going on, and then each campus, site by site, has a master plan identifying the building, so you can understand which building received the particular scores it had. It also has pictures. We also have a database of even more pictures. We tried to highlight the main pictures that were really reflective of the notes that we were taking. The surveys also, the community stakeholder survey is also within your report, and then there's an appendix that includes the data that, from us visiting each classroom and rating the classroom on those various categories that we shared with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this document's very much a compliance document, so we can access our Prop 2 funding, and so we've accomplished that. Again, this is not work we're going to be doing necessarily, but we're required to have this plan in order to access state funds, so this is for approval.
Okay, yeah, let's go around and make.
Hi, thank you so much for your time and your.
It's my pleasure.
Presentation, and thank you, Will, as well. I understand that this is for compliance purposes, but I worry that the average person might get their hands on this and be very alarmed, and I'm not the average person, thankfully, so we're okay, but I do think we need to flesh through the advisements here, because this is going to go on the record, and so we need to be able to back into some of the information, okay? So, starting on, it's, for us, guys, it's page 1228, but for the planning report, it's 1.1 purpose. I just want to highlight that it says that the post-pandemic low of less than 2,300 students, and I think that's inaccurate.
That was a typo.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We caught that unfortunately before the, after the report was published. We apologize, should have said 3,200.
Yes, okay.
Apologize for that.
That's accurate, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you for catching it.
Sure. Okay, then going to the next page, 1.3 outcomes.
Which member of the page of the PDF?
So for you, it would be on your second or third page.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Sure. So let's start with the high school, please, because, Will, my question to you is, are you going to be using this as a guidance for your future deferred maintenance and your work with Dr. Hasty in establishing what we're going to be working on? Because if you are, then we really need to flesh through this tonight.
Right, maybe use it, using it as a guide, but we have done a complete facility assessment on all the buildings.
That's what I thought.
For maintenance and operations.
Okay.
That would be, we'd be focusing more on that, and this would be more of a guide and a reference for us to use in the future, and if we need to come up with some improvements we can make at individual buildings.
Okay, so I'll be really straightforward. I think it's alarming that the suggestion here is that within the next seven years, there is an advisement to spend over $250 million that will be crucial. I didn't interpret the verbiage that came later as crucial. I thought it was a lot of suggestions. To me, $250 million is going to buy a new building, and then some, you know what I mean? And so I just want to bring this to everybody's attention, because the community could interpret this as somebody is recommending to us that we pass a $520 million bond, and that is not for me on the table tonight or within my term, so I just want to put that out there.
I would agree with that. I would suggest we table this and bring it back, because I don't want those numbers public.
I don't want this out there, exactly.
To think that we need to go out and get two, 300 more million dollars.
Is it Mr. Abadi?
Yes.
Mr. Abadi, please go back and sharpen your pencil just a little bit, you know what I mean? So let's, but let's go through it, so we're all on the same page, okay?
Can I, before, can I just ask a question? Are we required to put dollar amounts in this report like that? Or are we just required to have a master plan?
I think we're just required to have a master plan. I think it's part of their responsibility was to add dollar amounts based on their assessments.
But is there a requirement at the state level to have dollar amounts in it?
I'd have to double-check the Prop 2 guidelines, because they just were issued recently, so I'd have to double-check. I don't want to see.
I would say if we don't have to.
Then let's not.
Then let's not.
Yeah, and then we don't have to dig into it, because I'll, so just working through what you're recommending, let's say, you know, a community member opens this up, what you're suggesting is that crucially, the high school requires $10 million, then in three years, another $23 million of repairs, and then within seven years, I assume it's all from zero to seven, right? Not three plus seven?
Yes.
Okay, so then in the next seven years, over $250 million, which I personally take issue with, and then another 20 million within the next 10 million.
10 years.
10 years, exactly. Plus the educational enhancement costs for the educational programs, which I was not really able to decipher what that was exactly referring to, okay? So putting the dollars aside, now let's go just about the high school. Let's go into the meat of what you're recommending. So for me, it's on the second page, following where the high school starts, 2.2.2 facilities summary. So I think that we can all agree that Building A is in need of some love, and we have been making a big effort to that end, but I'm not aware of $250 million worth of love. And so that's one thing that I would be interested to know how you got to those recommendations.
Can I ask?
And I don't even need an answer right now, just, you know, going forward, yes.
Can I ask a question? If we're not going to associate monetary numbers with this, should we be discussing it right?
Right, so we don't need to, that's true.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I'd like to not do this in.
We can drop it for now.
Well, but I, I think Ms. Manichari's point is well-taken, that we can't approve this report in its current form.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is to table this.
Yeah.
And bring back something that is more palatable.
Of course, it doesn't, we've been presented with it. We don't have to approve it or do anything, because it's just a discussion and a presentation. So it's something that we can look at further in the future, Mrs. Manichari, rather than delve into it right now. That's what I was trying to say.
But also, can I highlight to you that you also have the swim gym designated as historical, which is good timing, because tonight it was recommended that we make it historical, but on the basis that it's historical, you didn't give that many recommendations, and so I just want to notate that it's not historical.
Yeah, so when, there are exceptions in the code for historic facilities, where they don't have to meet the same level of, for example, ADA requirements.
Yes.
Et cetera, so it reduces the impact, knowing that that, it was, that the swim gym is a building that was deemed historical by the district, we felt the investment would be minimal.
Thank you, understood. So that's it, I don't need to delve in further, Dr. Chernus, I'm understanding. So are we going to withdraw our motion? Is there a motion on the floor? Okay, so see you again in the future. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any comment from?
Yeah, any more feedback, because we would love to come back the next time with something that you would be happy to.
I guess the only thing I would like to say is, thank you for this very, very impressive report. I have to tell you, it shows a tremendous amount of digging in and understanding what the buildings are looking like, and where we need help, and so on, and that's something that the board needs to look into in the future now. And I really, you've really brought out a lot of information that we need to look at, so I think, thank you so much.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is, speaking of improvements, we have a ratification of an agreement with Genescent Flooring for the Beverly Hills High School Building A, first and second floor covering installation. I would like to make a motion for that. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any discussion? Anybody want to talk about it? Any questions?
Will, could we learn more about it?
Absolutely. So this is for a flooring contract that is in the, what we call the glass lobby. So if you're familiar with that area, it's underneath the bridge at the high school that spans across Heath, but the glass lobby is that lobby area right underneath the bridge. It will be one of the entrances to the Peters, so we wanted to kind of beautify the area a little bit with some new flooring that floor has been beat up over the years with all the construction and people coming in and out. What else could I tell you about it? It's going to refresh the area.
Are there any pictures of what the flooring will look like or anything?
No, so basically what we're doing is trying to match what's already upstairs, the second floor of Building A, so we're kind of matching that, that, kind of that black rubber flooring that we have up there. So we're going to match that flooring throughout, and we're going to have gray stair treads that will be included.
And this is coming out of maintenance and operations?
No, this is bond.
Bond money?
Yeah.
Okay, so these were the only two bids that we got, or were there any others, or these were the two best, or what?
These were the two that we received. We tried to get a third, but it never came in, and we were also working with contractors that are certified to install the flooring that we have currently, so we had to go with the certified contractors for that.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions, discussion?
Just my only point of clarification is this is going to be done within 30 days, right? I'm seeing a 24-day.
Absolutely, so that's why you'll see here, this is a ratification, because we already asked the contractor to proceed with the order, and Dr. Hasty did sign it for us already, so that we can proceed with ordering the material.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Sabag?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, superintendent's report. Dr. Chernus, it's your turn.
Okay. Oftentimes, people say, oh, you have time to relax, because it's summer. Well, during the summer, we actually get quite a bit of work done, and so it's been, it's been a tremendous last few weeks since we last met. Before I get to the slides, I will say that the DLA, the Dual Language Academy launch, has been an amazing success, to the point where we've closed the enrollment window while we verify all of our enrollment. We filled up classes at both El Rodeo and Horace Mann. Dr. Seaman does anticipate reopening the window for, to fill it up, for just whatever room is still available for those families. So if the board gets questions about can I still join, the answer is maybe. The guarantee window has closed, but we will reopen, we anticipate in July for new enrollments. Again, this is for kinder and first grade, and it is at both El Rodeo and Horace Mann. So that's been really exciting. Next slide, please. I had a great opportunity to visit the command center at the police station, meet with the chief and our SROs. I expressed the importance of school resource officers to the chief. I explained that when I was in Beverly Hills as principal, at the time, we had a school resource officer at every school, and that was instituted right after Columbine, and it was really something that the parents, the community loved. So right now, we have two school resource officers that are both excellent, and we have great communication, and so we definitely want to keep those two, and we understand that the police department is, you know, trying to fill their normal positions, and, but we're always welcome to have those conversations about increasing that support. You see Mutnami, that is the police dog, so I got to meet the police dog, I got to, you won't see here some pictures from the command center, but really, it's really incredible that, the level of expertise and technology at the police station, how they can see, there's so many eyes in the city, and so not only the direct visuals, but, and their drones and everything else, but their response time's incredible. And so I thank the police department for allowing Colby and myself to join them and to visit their station. Yesterday, we had a great opportunity to visit an exciting new partner, and that is the One Beverly Hills site. This has been a project that has transitioned several property owners over the last 20 years, and we're now at the point where our neighbors will be building these, a hotel right above El Rodeo School, and then Two Towers as well, and it'll be a great property, and we hope to have many families. And so early indications are that there are families that are going to be moving into these residences, so we're really excited about that. Ms. Sabog and Mr. Stewart and Mrs. Marcus all joined us for the tour of the facility, and it's very exciting, and they hope to have this completed by 2028. Next slide. And then today, we had a great opportunity to visit Garner Holt Industries. We got to meet with the Garner Holt. I want to thank the board for trekking out two hours each way, because it was important. Unfortunately, Board Member Stern couldn't make it, she's still wrapping up her other position, but we'll be sure to fill her in, and it was just really exciting to see opportunities for students, and just so the community knows, the commitment of our school board to drive to Redlands at 7:00 in the morning and be there all day, and then come here for a board meeting. So we're always looking at ways and opportunities to improve the experience for kids, and so we saw what virtual reality can do, we saw animatronics at the highest levels in all the theme parks, and ways that students can actually produce this. So it was a great opportunity. We went there as a means to look at ways to improve our STEAM offerings, and so it was, it was a great opportunity, and hopefully, we can send some students on field trips there. When we were there today, there were actually students coming in for a field trip, so it's a great opportunity for kids. And that will conclude my report.
Okay, go around the corner. Mrs. Manichari.
Thank you. I would like to speak to the field trip today. It was just amazing. Thank you for introducing Garner Holt to us, and to see the possibilities are just endless. And so, you know, it's not even about do we have the dollars, it's more about what is our need. We already have a lot of equipment in place. We already have a lot of programming in place, and so my understanding or my expectation is that Dr. Chernus, Dr. Hasty, and of course, Dr. Seaman, you'll probably at some point be coming back to the board with a presentation on what your ask would be of the board and the vision going forward. Would you say that's correct?
Yes, continuously, we will be coming to the board with ways to improve the technology and the offerings at our schools. And so what, the involvement of this, of this group, you know, we will meet to discuss, but for sure, we'll be trying to improve upon our offerings for our kids, and today, I think, is a great first step in that.
Yeah, I agree, especially because we've been having the conversation about Makerspace and Science Lab. My understanding to that end is that Makerspace is actually increasing by 15 minutes, so all kindergarten through five kids will be getting 45 minutes every week instead of 30. Science is actually going to be increasing by 30 minutes as well, so all K through five will be getting 60 minutes instead of 30 minutes. So that's exciting, and I, and I think that when our parents hear a little bit about change, it can be scary, but I feel like it's really good for them to know that our superintendent director, superintendent of ed services are bringing us more, not less.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up Makerspace, because if what we saw today, we were able to bring to our Makerspace, it would improve our elementary Makerspace programs dramatically, and so that's our goal.
But don't just say elementary, because then the interpretation is going to be not middle school and not high school, and so I'm looking forward to finding out what And so I'm looking forward to finding out what you're hoping to bring to us for all K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart?
I don't know what else to say. Um, thank you, Dr. Chernus, for, uh, making us go really far really early. It's very nice of you. Uh, traffic on the 10 anytime during the day is really awful. Uh, I really loved our trip, um, to get to meet Mr. Holt, I thought was super awesome. I've actually been following him for, you know, 20-plus years. Uh, just to see things from, you know, my childhood, to see like the Matterhorn, uh, like the cart that, you know, I probably went on when I was five years old was super awesome. And I think we all jonesed over Baby Yoda, especially Dr. Seaman.
You already told them about it?
Um, but yeah, I mean, I just think that it was such an eye-opening experience that we have so many possibilities, not only with them, but so many other vendors as well, to bring incredible things to our school district. But, uh, thank you, Dr. Chernus, for leading, uh, in that effort. Also too, uh, I just wanted to make a comment on, I think it's been well-publicized about some of the issues going on over at the police department. Um, and I just want to speak for myself, I obviously can't speak for the board, but, you know, we, as a city, rely on our police. We love our police. And as a school district, uh, the police are crucial. Um, and with public safety, as we all saw on the graph, that school safety is the number one topic for everyone, that I just want to publicly say that we support our, uh, law enforcement wholeheartedly, um, and hopefully things get settled up over there. And also too, uh, I just want to say on the Makerspace front is, is I really think that there's just been a lot of bad information, uh, being put out there and, and, and I just think from the field trip that we took and a lot of other things that we've said, that our commitment to Makerspace, science classes in general, and making it better is a massive priority for the board and for our administration. So I would just really love to put that topic to bed that somebody wants to tear it down or make it worse than it already is. I think it's only getting better. So, uh, if anyone has any more questions, I think that they need to reach out, but, uh, I don't see anything being taken away. I only see things being improved and, and I hope that, uh, seeing some of these things that we are doing here and the great work that Dr. Seaman is doing and the amount of time and effort that he's putting into communicating with parents on what is happening with these programs, I hope that this gets to put it to bed, that it's not going anywhere, it's only getting better.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, so, Dr. Chernus, thank you so much for your report. Uh, I wanted to thank you so much for the elementary Spanish, uh, language program that it's been overwhelmingly, um, supported by the parents and the enrollment has, you said that it's over, right? Like you, I'm so happy with that. And the One Beverly Hills was fascinating, how we could look above and see exactly what was going on, uh, their construction, their building, how they want to incorporate with our district. We had really interesting conversations. And, um, the, um, field trip, for a better word, Garner and Holt, yeah, that was very interesting. At seven in the morning, when I wasn't even ready and Judy is, is absolutely amazing with her calm voice, she literally woke me up because I went to bed really late and she's like, "Don't worry, it's okay, I'll be there in 15 minutes." And I'm like, "Oh my God, 15 minutes to get completely ready."
No board member left behind.
Yes, it was amazing. So Garner and Holt, this is his name, this gentleman, because I, I've never heard of, of him before. So this gentleman, uh, focused on basically, like you go on the Matterhorn and, in Disneyland and you have, um, these animals like come towards you or It's a Small World or, um, The Haunted House, all of this is what he does and he does it worldwide, all over the United States. And this is the, you know, what we were looking at to bring to our school district. Um, it's from scratch to build these robotics that are unbelievable, that look lifelike. So I think that's absolutely amazing. It's something to discuss, something to talk about, and thank you for bringing it for us to see. I appreciate it.
I really, I've heard only great things since I've gotten here. I'm really sorry that I did have to miss that. And I'm thinking about the Yeti on the Matterhorn, wasn't it the Yeti, right? Wasn't that one of these animatronic? Yeah, that thing scared me from like a very young age. Okay. And also Chuck E. Cheese, right? Doesn't that?
That's what he did. That was his first project.
We'll bring you out.
Yes.
I always found that very hard to eat, my pizza with like a mouse going like this, really eerie, but, you know, whatever. Yeah, I don't remember the name. Okay. Um, but I think that to Mr. Stewart's point, um, this type of technology, while it may seem like we're just looking like at behind the scenes of sort of Disneyland or whatever, but there's a lot to it. There is STEAM and there's STEM and there's CTE and art and there's all these things that, um, we absolutely as a district have to move towards. Um, a friend of mine who is a Duke, uh, university graduate, um, just told me that he was on a planning commission for giving money to create an AI just for Duke University. So it's like Duke Chat or Duke AI or something like that. My point is, is that now it seems like entities, school districts, universities are embracing specific, um, models of technology. So for us, it could be something like this, animatronics, or it could be, um, AI and we, and, and the, the schools are embracing it and making it their own brand. And I would love to see us do that, whether for animatronics or for AI or both, um, because that is where we're moving. We're not moving away from it, we're moving forward it, uh, toward it and, um, those are, are very important things. So I want to ask you, Dustin, as our educational expert on, um, curriculum, so if we were to say break apart, um, some of the curricular strands for the animatronics, where would that fall? Would that be CTE? Would it be computer science? Where, where would you like, as a, like sort of a brass tacks, yeah, Makerspace 3D print? Like where would you see it fall?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Dr. Chernus, as well, for setting up the field trip and, um, I begrudgingly had to drive out to Redlands as well and wanted to keep going to Palm Springs.
Yeah. Thanks for coming back tonight.
I did stop at Redlands and didn't come back to work. But it was, it was, uh, super unique to be able to see all of our pathways. Uh, what was mentioned already is just the fact that, um, you know, I appreciate our district for investing in our pathways. Uh, you know, we have a lot of pathways that are there. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to start to, um, braid them together and bring them together to collaborate and, um, and to collaborate with this organization, um, not just Makerspace, there was so much art involved. 2D art and 3D art from clay to, um, to just the way that they, yep, stage design with, uh, Tom, uh, Thomas's program, our VAPA program, and it really brought them all together. And I think that he did a really nice job of explaining that to us. It's just not your coding student.
Right.
It's taking the robot and then putting skin on it and then making it look human. You know, the costume to the hair to, you know, and, and really making it from a T, 2D sketch into a 3D reality and really a reality was what was, I think, breathtaking for me. Um, so starting it with our Makerspace and looking at our, our, um, make, uh, yeah, Makerspace, um, within the elementary arena and being able to, um, advance that and then build it up into our STEM, but also our robotics, but also our ceramics, but, and bringing in better, uh, you know, collaborating more around this common goal. It was really, really cool. So thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, but thank you for your report.
Okay, um, well, I journey out also through this wonderful place, um, which is really amazing. And, uh, I'm hoping that there are many aspects of what we saw today that can be incorporated into our classroom. I'm not looking for the full gamut of, of what can be realistic, but I was particularly interested in the AI and the implications for it. It's here, it's here to stay. So I'm hoping that, uh, that too will be something because they do have a session and they have a section for the new AI. It was truly an amazing experience and the arranging and, and I'm sure we will know about it. It was short. Didn't have my speaker on, but it's just been an amazing thing and thank you very much. Um, okay, so that did not require any, um, uh, this was a, so now we're going to discuss, um, a chance to have an additional regular board meeting in July. I believe Mr. Chern, Dr. Chernus, you asked for that and, uh, you want to bring that to the attention of the board?
So the recommendation is to add a meeting, um, either the 15th or the 29th, knowing that, um, we have a lot of work to do to get ready for the school year. And so we're open to either dates, um, but we are recommending, uh, one more meeting, um, to make sure that we have everything we need to open the school year.
Okay, we'll go around. Mrs. Manichari, do you have any particular thoughts on that? Another meeting on either the 15th or the 29th? I might add that the 15th for me would be a difficult night day.
Uh, that's, that's fine. I, I have experienced the last couple summers or on occasion, for example, this year in partic- particular during winter break when we've gone a full month without having a meeting. It's been very challenging. I would say the most for our new employees who want to start getting insurance and get on-boarded and for you guys who I'm sure want to get things settled in. So I, I am not going away this summer and I am available on, on all Tuesdays in July, if that makes things easier.
So, right, so sorry to clarify, the recommendation is either the 15th or the 29th of July.
I mean, we're, but we're, we're having one on the 22nd, right? So then in that case, will that, will that help you on the 29th?
Yes, e- e- either date will work.
Okay. I mean, do you think the, Mrs. Marcus, if I may ask, are you having a trip planned?
I am too.
Okay. So if two of you are, then that's that.
Um, the 15th is better for me. Two weeks in July, I'll be out of the country, so.
Which two?
Um, 7/23.
I will be on the 14th.
Okay.
But it's, it's okay. I mean, it, it might not require that we're all here.
Uh, July 29th is my birthday and, and I will not be here.
Well, here's the other thing, was since we're many the regular calendar, it doesn't need to be a Tuesday.
I just spent a week in Hawaii and I spent 12 hours a day working, so.
Yes, I'm sure.
I'm sure I'll be available by teleconference.
It does not need to be on, on either of these two dates. It doesn't need to be on a Tuesday.
Like, could it be on the Thursday, the 17th, Mrs. Marcus?
I, uh, yeah, the 17th, I will be back.
Dr. Stern, sorry to bother you. Will it, um, will you be here the Thursday, the 17th?
That's July 17?
Yes.
Let's see what my spouse says. She just caught and said to me, "You will be here on the..."
Okay.
Okay, I will be here the 15th, um, but not the 29th.
What about the 17th?
How about this?
The 17th.
Paging?
Yes, 17th, yes.
Okay. Okay, so to your point, Dr. Chernus, if perhaps Thursday, the 17th will be helpful. Okay.
Thursday.
My birthday is the 18th.
Okay, so could you just read out all the, okay, so guys, here are the summer dates.
So the summer dates, the, the, this...
He's going to read out all the summer.
The summer dates, the current summer dates are July 22nd and August 5th. The recommendation is to add one more meeting in July.
So we're adding July 17? Is there a problem?
N- no, there's no problem with that. It's just then we'd have another meeting five days later.
You said you wanted another meeting?
Yeah.
We'll be meeting on the 17th and the 22nd, which is actually five days before, only we'll be on the 29th.
The only problem is...
Mr. Stewart's birthday that day.
Yeah, but the only, the only problem is, is that the 17th would be the day that you go over the agenda for the 22nd. How are you going to overlap that?
Yeah. The, another alternative is like July 10th.
You usually go over the agenda on a Thursday.
Thursday, the 10th. I think you might be away leading up to that.
So you're going to be going over the agenda and we're going to have a board meeting.
I'll be here for the 17th for that meeting. That's not a problem. The problem is I would have to set the agenda by telephone with Dr. Chernus for the meeting on the 17th.
Right, but the meeting for the 22nd? So you're going to do the agenda and the meeting?
I will, I can meet with him in the morning.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, Dr. Chernus, if you're hiring any management and it needs to be approved by the board, your next opportunity will not be until July 22nd. And most people, you, I assume you, our admin team would want for them to start as soon as possible.
Dr. Seaman, what's your position on this?
Uh, I mean, I'm more for the 15th, 17th, only in the sense that we have a couple of management positions that we hope to be able to get approved, to be able to have that start of the school year. I think the sooner, closest to where we sit, the better.
So we're going with the 17th or are we going with the 29th?
15.
No, we're going that way.
Not the 29th. I think that's...
15, sorry.
Or Wednesday, the 16th?
Yeah, 17 works for me.
How about Wednesday, the 16th?
I will be back on the 16th.
Better? May I ask, what is your travel date?
From the 8th to the 15th, 15th.
Perfect.
14th.
Well, if it's the 14th, then we can have it on the 15th.
16th.
That's what, yeah, we said.
But are you coming, are you going to be traveling on the?
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be back on the night of the 15th.
Okay, 16th, got you.
So it's the 16th or the 17th? Well, what do we decide?
16th.
16th?
Okay, July 16th.
I will have the teleconference review on that.
Oh, you can't do that?
No, for planning.
Oh, I'll be back on the 16th. I'll be back on the night of the 15th.
Okay, so we need a motion to add to the, um, regularly scheduled meeting, July 16th.
Okay, I need a motion to, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve an additional meeting of the night of, of the day of July 16th, 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Dr. Stern? Uh, uh, any more discussion on it? Okay, I call for question. All those in favor of July 16th?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
May I confirm that's a 5 o'clock meeting? Is that a 5 o'clock meeting standard time?
We're not doing that.
5 PM.
5 PM, thank you.
Well, we'll do a 5 PM, but if we need a closed session, we'll have a closed session. We'll leave that open. Dr. Chernus will let me know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, go into the comments.
Okay, before, now the approval of the first reading board policy 1114, district-sponsored social media, before I ask, make a motion on this, is there a policy in that cat number right now, which is what I want to know? Is there a policy 1114?
No.
There is a policy.
So, do we need a motion for this or?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering if it's something we should discuss because I'm having a feeling that perhaps the board should have a committee to discuss and prepare policies in advance and then bring them to the board so that it's not, to discuss the thing maybe and have a committee to do this going forward about policy changes and whatnot. Uh, Dr. Chernus, maybe you'd like to make a statement about that?
Yeah, so my experience, it's been very effective to have, I've seen it two ways. One, I've seen the board appoint two members of the school board to be on a policy subcommittee and then those two members can go through and revise policies and then bring it to the board for a first reading. That's one option, um, that I've seen in districts that I've been in. The other option is to have, um, uh, quarterly board policy, um, study sessions. And at those, staff brings a variety of policies. Oftentimes, um, the board will recommend to bring policies and at that study session, we actually discuss the policies and then following that, it comes to the board for first reading. So what it does is both those provide an opportunity to deliberate debate, um, and bring, um, to the whole board, a first reading that has had some, some level of discussion.
Now you say at, at intervals, what if there is a need to change a policy beforehand? In other words, you, let's say we have one every four months, we have a, we do a policy, bring policies to the, to the board that have been made up by the two members or by whatever.
Yeah, so if it's not an emergency, typically, um, the policy committee looks at it first, unless it's like a, a state law that a new policy is recommended. Um, policy committee vets it and then it comes to the whole board. That's one option. The other option is to have quarterly policy study sessions where board members can say, "I want to bring this or that," and then we talk about the... where board members can say, I want to bring this or that, and then we talk about the policies. Either way, right now, what we're doing is we're having, for example, on the, the policy on standards-based instruction, we're discussing it here, right? And then the next meeting, we're bringing it for a first reading. So this allows-
Actually, we've already discussed this one.
No, I, yes.
And this is actually the first reading.
Right.
But I also have a question in regards to it.
Well, let's first of all, discuss that one thing.
Dr. Chernus, the one concern that I have with your suggestion is that, that really elongates the process. Like, I'll give you an example. When we did our cell phone policy, we were on a time crunch, and we wanted to get it done for the start of school. So if we were going through that kind of process, it would not have happened on time, you know? I think the same thing goes for the, I mean, putting aside the district-sponsored social media, which I, we've been trying to do for three months now, I actually thought this was a second reading, because we had gone through it once, but that was, was that a different iteration?
It was, it was-
It was a discussion. Okay, so, but for tonight, can we work through this one so that we can try to move it forward? It's too much?
So, um, can I make a suggestion for-
I have like thirty-five changes.
So, yeah, for this one, for this one, we should table it, because we do want to make a lot of changes. Plus, we have our PIO that needs to be hired, that should have input in the social media, right? So, not yet.
I mean, I don't mind the committee, it's just, I would want the committee to bring it back immediately for vote.
We've talked about the one for district-sponsored social media.
Yes.
Well, my thinking is, is that, uh, uh, what about, would you like to be on that committee?
I would love to, yes.
Is there anybody else that would love to be on that?
Well, are we voting for even doing a committee? What committee?
Well, this one here is, well, we, let's-
Just for this one?
This one, I don't, we, we read this one once already, right?
So I, I think it's acceptable, if a board member has an expertise, to volunteer to work with staff on reworking the policy and bringing it back.
Yeah, I like that.
If I could just make a comment, I mean, we, we went through this, uh, you know, a few months ago. We made notes, um, and now the policy that was bought back is more of a CSBA boilerplate
Yes.
than based upon the notes that we had originally set. So this, in my opinion, is completely different. Yeah, there are portions of it in the bottom, in the yellow section. But there's a lot of boilerplate language that, in my opinion, especially with a lot of the things that we've experienced in the last six months, as well as future considerations like deep fakes, A.I., what is the process for, if you have a grievance, if we ask for something to be taken down, and somebody says, no, I don't want that to be taken down, or vice versa, including, uh, um, things that I've been working with, uh, uh, with Colby on about naming conventions for district-controlled accounts. It has a, um, has a reference to a, a, um, uh, um, you know, a password manager, but it doesn't really get into what exactly that means, and what is the process for changing a password, and all of these other things that we had discussed. So I, I, I wanna either create the committee or table it to bring back a, a, you know, a different version. But again, like Ms. Manichari said, it's not to then push it down the road three months again. It's to make sure it comes back in two weeks from now, because this is one of the most crucial pieces that we need in place.
We need this policy, and I think you should work on it with the PIO, and make sure to get everything in it.
Policy by policy, like, so this one, we know that Mr. Stewart would be-
I don't want to create a committee for all policies, I'd rather-
No, 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 when it's needed, or when there's a new one coming up, some changes are just a matter of a small thing that-
Of course, absolutely, yeah. And I definitely don't want to be overseeing all policies, but on this one, I'm definitely in tune with.
Is there anybody else that would like to actually work on this?
This particular one?
I mean-
Just this one?
If you, if you want someone who's not so in it to review it with you, I'm happy to do that. I, I prepared notes on this, and I'm happy to wait. If you and Colby want to work together on another one, and I can be another set of eyes, I'll leave it to you.
Either way, it comes back to the full board, so, yeah.
Hundred percent, of course.
Yeah.
I agree.
Dr. Seaman?
Yeah, in past, we've also duh, had where some of the board members would provide individual feedback to the Singleton Board members, so they kind of had a collective as you're kind of drafting it, before bringing it back to the board, so one way-
Do it that way?
But it's only one-way communication, it's just Judy to Russell.
Like, I can hand in my comments.
It's not to you guys' group, it's one-way communication.
It's more, it's more big.
Okay, the beige act allows the one-way communication, so that's fine, so-
But also, not only is a policy, but it also includes-
A regulation, I saw that.
So I think that you need to look at the regulations also.
Yeah. Okay, so if I'm understanding, everybody, Mr. Stewart, you're gonna go back, perhaps with Mr. Gollardian, and revisit this, and then we can each send you our feedback, if we have any.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll just scan mine and email it to you both.
Beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so we will just bypass that, the high gig. We, and, uh, everybody else will put their comments, uh, we're gonna get a comment from you, and we'll send it back to you.
Yes, perfect.
Do you want to share the documents, like the board document?
I think we can.
But it can only be shared with Mr. Stewart.
Can't be moved off.
Well, no, if he sends us, we send it back. I don't talk it-
Yeah, we can't all, you can't all type into the document.
No, 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 no.
Uh, send your comments to, to Colby. Colby.
To Colby, okay, all right.
Now you can do.
Yeah, okay, thank you, all right. So I have to reset, send our comments to, all right, that, that makes sense, okay. All right, okay. Okay, moving on, Beverly Hills Unified School District Internship Program for seniors and alumni. Alumni, alumni, uh, uh, I don't know, we do that there, okay.
Yes, so, um, I see that there could be a wonderful need for us to do an internship program with our seniors and our alumnis. I think that, um, you know, once, once they graduate from B.H. U.S.D., they have their particular, and I've seen students actually request and come up and, and ask, is there something I can help with the district? Is there something I can do if they have a specialty in business, or they have a specialty in culinary, or arts, or media? If they want to intern at B.H. U.S.D., I think it would be a wonderful program that we could provide. And also, um, alumnis coming and coming back to our district and showing where they are, what they're doing. As a matter of fact, we spoke, what did we speak about? Angelina Jolie? Like, uh, she came here, she's an alumni, and it, wouldn't it be wonderful? She came back and she spoke about her experience at B.H. U.S.D. So I, I think, you know, maybe we can do like some kind of program.
I think it's a great idea. I think also, working with our local partners, this came up yesterday at One Beverly, where they're open to interns, and, and I had a great meeting with David, the general manager of the Beverly Hilton. He also is open to interns, so absolutely, it's good for kids, it's good for their college experience as well. So when they're juniors, they can get these experiences, write es- their college essays about it, help with their applications. So, um, we'd be happy to look at developing something.
Can we develop something, get a program in line, and then have the students sign up? And I don't know how exactly it could work if they need to apply, and then we need to accept them, or not accept them, or just accept them?
So I think there's two things. One is interning for the district, others is in, interning for the community. What I'd like to do is work with the Chamber of Commerce on a district internship program, where we can offer our kids internships. I know the local businesses, from what, in my conversations with the chamber, are, you know, willing. So it's just about formalizing something, and then we can talk about, I've had some students, our former board president, I just met with, interested in some sort of internship as well. Some kids take gap years, and so, um, we will definitely look at that.
That's great, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to note that we do have a robust career services department, and Cindy Dubin does a great job, and, and I would, I would think that maybe we can first loop her in with Dr. Seaman, because she has so many pre-existing contacts, and she also has a hundred ideas to do more. Every time I talk to her, they're like flowing from her brain.
Also, interning here at the district.
Yes, so, a little bit of everything, exactly. But I just think that it would be, maybe the, the best right place to start is also with her as well.
Well, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I was gonna say that we already have a very strong leadership in that department that goes out to solicit. I think what you're interested in doing is reversing it. It's not the students going out, but the seniors and the-
Both, both.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we already have one.
Right, for instance, our student, like our student board member, he would love to intern at our school, at our district.
Yeah, but when you're talking, I'm talking about there, to do it in the school, but generally speaking, the internship program works the outside.
Right, so we already have that, we kind of have that. We should, um, clean it up a little bit and make it more, um, robust, and also in the district, and also alumnis to come back and mentor our students, and, you know-
I think that happens when they have this program in the spring of the year. A lot of our former alumni come back for that special day, and they, they really recruit a lot of kids.
Actually, what's really interesting is, we always had the career day, and then Cindy Dubin in Career Services, this year for the inaugural year, did a job fair, which apparently went very well, and my expectation is, I think it was like forty-nine employers from the, from the neighborhood, from the community. I, I would expect her to have seventy-five or a hundred the following year. So maybe she'll have some responses for you.
Okay, well, has that covered the topic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The next one is Beverly Hills High School, Beverly Vista Middle School Bathroom Cleanliness. I believe you asked for that? Who asked for it?
Yes, so, I don't, hi, Will. I, I feel like this is the Price is Right, come on down.
So, Ms. Sabok-
Which one do you want? Which door?
Ms. Sabok, um, I've asked, I've asked Will to start with just a baseline of what we do before we field questions, and, thank you.
All right, so once I saw this, uh, item on the agenda, and after talking to Dr. Chernus and Dr. Hasty, I, I went back and looked at, what are we doing now as far as bathrooms go, just in general? So in general, the bathrooms are supposed to be cleaned every day, that's an obvious, and that's a given. It's one of the top priority areas, if anything else were to be set aside for the day because of staffing or for whatever reason, the bathroom should always be clean, so that's the first thing. We use tools, we have tools to get this done. How effective they are right now, and how much we are using them is the question, which I will be looking into, now that I'm putting this MNO hat on. But we do have logs, uh, we have checklists, that, you know, we have leads at each campus that are responsible for checking in on these restrooms, to make sure they're clean. We also rely on the staff at the schools to report to Ken, but will be me now. And, uh, we also have our new custodial services and operations manager starting on July first, so he's gonna be heavily involved in checking all the restrooms and the schools in general for cleanliness and helping me managing, managing that whole thing. That's, that's an overall summary of what's supposed to be happening, and I'll, I'll be more involved in that.
Okay, so, I am, I'll give you a few pointers. So, first of all, the restocking of the bathroom needs to be consistent, constant motion. The cleanliness needs to be cleaned every day, like you said, their logging, their writing, who's cleaning it? The date, the time, I don't know if we're doing that.
They're supposed to be, per what I have here, but it's, it's not happening.
Okay, and make sure there's soap in the soap dispensers, make sure the soaps are, dispensers are working, paper towels, toilet paper, you know, these are the basic necessities. I would like, you know, for all of that to make sure that it's, um, you know, very well maintained, and I'll tell you why. So we have a lot of students using, of course, the restrooms, and we have a lot of students who are not using the restrooms. And the reason they're not using it is because they don't feel comfortable to use it. And we also have a problem with security, we have to make sure that there's privacies. And I thi- we absolutely don't have any problem with Albert Data, so that's why I put only the high school and the middle school. I think that's where our concerns are. The elementary schools, we don't, as far as I know, we don't have a problem. So there are some students in the middle school that do not use the restroom so much that they have, um, uh, internal, like, pain, you know, and they don't even know, because they don't, you know.
Is it saying because it's too dirty?
Um, they don't feel comfortable, and even when they use it, we have to make sure they're stocked, right? They have to be stocked. So I don't know what to do about the security so that they do feel comfortable, and then the alarms with the, with the vape and things like that, we don't want that happening, and make sure that they're updated. The high school, I think, is, um, really needs to be updated, some, somehow, there's, there's issues there. So, I mean, that's it. If we can concentrate on the restrooms, I think that would be important.
Yeah, like I said, that's usually one of the top priority areas at each school. Mr. Gregorio Luna, be starting on July first, him and I, they'll be one of our main topics of discussion. And, um, yeah, and we can talk about security, I'm not quite sure what we could do to help, or I could, but-
Okay, so let me tell you, for instance, if there's a, a boys' bathroom and there's no door, you know, at the stall or whatever you call it, um, you know-
A stall door.
The kids want some privacy, because that's an issue, right? Because then there's an issue with phones, and, you know, if I, I don't want to go too far with that, but basically to feel-
Which stall doesn't have a door?
Yeah, I was gonna follow.
Now, don't get me wrong, I've actually had kids say that to me, I, I've never seen it personally, but has that ever been proven that there's stalls with no doors on them at all?
I haven't, no, I haven't, I haven't seen one, but-
Destroyed the doors.
Oh, yeah, that happens.
Destroyed the doors, I guess you don't want the doors, and so it could, they put the doors back. I remember that as an issue a long time ago.
Sure.
We will, we will check every bathroom to make sure we have doors on every stall.
But can I ask you, Mrs. Sabok, is this a, um, summer issue that, in terms of timing?
For years, I'm just bringing it up, because it needs to be spoken about. So it's been an issue for years, and I just want to make, even during COVID, for instance. During COVID, we were so demanding on everything else, like the mask and the testing and everything, but we didn't have soap in the soap dispensers of the bathroom for the kids to wash their hands. Remember COVID, they said wash your hands like a hundred times, or whatever it was, and the kids didn't have soap. And so it, it's, it's, it's been an issue, so I just want to make sure it's not an issue anymore, and our kids have perfect, you know, as much as we can, clean, stocked.
Absolutely, we're on it.
Thank you.
Can we, um, get out of the nineteenth century and get away from pieces of paper that people write on to say that they checked the bathroom? Like, can we put in like an iPad or some kind of a digital screen that they can-
Oh, a screen on, in the bathroom, or just for ours, for our juice?
Yeah, like for us.
Yeah, we have like a, all this is-
Not a camera, just like a, you know, yeah, like a card that they can type in a code and say that they've checked the bathroom.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to, yeah.
Immediately go into a database and-
I built a side of a gym, so they, when they walk past certain areas, they have to clock in.
Yeah, like an RFID card that just show, same thing as like the ambassador security team that the city has.
Exactly, yeah, we can look into that.
They check in at a different point each time, and, and at least then we can have a report, instead of you needing to go to the, get the sheet and see who signed it and all that jazz, and-
We're gonna have a lot more oversight now. Yeah.
Can I ask another question about that though, the bathroom? Okay, another issue that every school I've ever worked at, they have graffiti issues, so I'm, I'm surprised you didn't bring that up. Has that come up? Um, graffiti, like, boys especially, like, there'll be like really bad, um, either, you know, vandalism or like really, um, bad graffiti. It could be that in this era, you know, kids are finding ways to get their messages out by, you know, digital means or whatever, they're not doing that, but that used to be a chronic problem. And I guess I'm not hearing that.
I don't know if we have, I'm not sure we have that.
I haven't noticed it lately, but I'm not walking around to all the bathrooms.
I don't see the graffiti, thank goodness.
Until today.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the last, before we have board comment, uh, standards-based instructional environment, this is just a discussion item. Uh, and, uh, I think that, Mrs. Sabok, you put that on there? And you put in something that you have a, an environment- And you put in something that you have a, an environment that you choose to present.
Okay, so this is something, a policy that we don't have that needs to be implemented. The policy that we do have is different. So as BHEA President referred to 6144, controversial issues. This policy is on how to responsibly teach controversial topics. But before I read that, I'd like to read this policy in, in its state of how it is, how it's being introduced. So this is a standard-based instructional environment policy. The purpose, the Beverly Hills Unified School District, BHUSD, is committed to fostering an inclusive, respectful, and academically rigorous environment for every student. This policy clarifies expectations around political, ideological, and personal expression during structural, instructional time. The goal is to preserve a standard-based instructional environment where all students feel safe to explore ideas, engage critically, and form their own perspectives free from undue influence. Policy statement, all BHUSD classrooms shall uphold the principles of a standards-based instructional environment during instructional time. Discussions of political, religious, or social sensitive topics must be directly relevant to the curriculum, particularly in courses like history, civics, government, geography, or economics, and presented factually, objectively, and without partisan bias. Educators are encouraged to guide thoughtful, balanced discussions that reflect a variety of viewpoints and promote analytical thinking, not ideological alignment. Use of political and ideological content in other subjects. In all other subjects, academic areas, including but not limiting to mathematics, English, science, physical education, world language, the arts, and technical electives, teachers must refrain from introducing political, ideological, or personal commentary unrelated to approved instructional goals. These classrooms are intended to focus on subject-specific learning in alignment with state and district standards and should remain free from contemporary or controversial discourse unless it is directly supported by the curriculum. Professional expectation for staff, all BHUSD staff, teachers, aides, and instructional personnel are expected to refrain from promoting or opposing political parties, candidates, ballot measures, or ideological causes. Avoid displaying partisan materials that are not curriculum-aligned. Not engage in political or ideological advocacy during instructional time. Avoid discussing sensitive topics such as religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or geopolitical conflicts unless directly connected to the curriculum. Respect and allow space for respectful, policy-compliant student expression. Align all instructional and classroom content with safe state standards and board-approved educational materials. Accountability, reporting, and support. Any concerns related to perceived bias and, or inappropriate classroom content should be directed to the site administrator or superintendent designated. Staff members with firsthand knowledge of potential violation are encouraged to report concerns promptly. The district is committed to investigating all reports professionally and confidentially consistent with its policies and applicable laws. Disciplinary actions may be taken if a staff member is found in violation of this policy. Following due process, BHUSD strictly prohibits retaliation against any individual who in good faith reports a concern or participates in an investigation. The cross-reference is, the policy, the existing policy of 6144, controversial issues, outlines guidance for the instructional use of sensitive or political content. And it also cross-references 4119.21, which is professional standards, sets expectations for ethical conduct by district employees. So the conclusion of this policy, this policy underscores BHUSD's commitment to a standard-based instructional environment in which every student has the opportunity to learn free from bias, coercion, or undue influence. By maintaining a clear focus on instructional integrity, BHUSD advances its core mission of educational excellence, empowering students to think critically, engage respectfully, and reach their full potential in alignment with the district's core values of excellence, integrity, wellness, inclusion, safety, and community. So the difference in that and the one that we already have. Yes, sure. Yeah, I think I should finish speaking before we discuss it because otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Well, we all have the.
We have the copy right here, so.
I don't know if you need to read that.
I don't, okay, I have the policy.
The community doesn't have the controversial issue policy.
Well, they have it in the policies there, the policies are out there for them.
Okay, so summarizing the controversial issues. The controversial issue policy is how to responsibly teach controversial topics. Meaning, if you have a curriculum that, let's say, health and you are, you know, teaching regarding gender or teaching any which way, this policy tells you how to go about it responsibly. The, the policy that we already have in place, controversial issues, right?
All I'm saying is, the, this is a policy. And a lot of what you read is, this is the why. This is why we do it.
No, this is how we do it.
No, no, how you have to do it is, the, the regulations are teaching you how to go about it and what you have to follow. This is why we have it. We have it so that every student has equal opportunities to, to present the material. In other words, we're not indoctrinating, we're not facili, we don't indoctrinate, we facilitate.
This is not indoctrinating, this is just simply saying.
No, no, I'm not saying that it does. I'm not saying that it does, but I'm saying that there's, what you have read covers both policy and regulations, that's why.
Which policy and regulation? Controversial issues?
Well, no, that's, now, I'm saying is, you go to professional expectations for staff, all staff, those are regulations right there. Those are the things that should be in a regulation, right there.
Yes, that, that's not this policy, though.
But you, but you would have, but, no, but what I'm saying is, again, we need to have a policy and then followed with regulations, which you have somewhat addressed here.
No, this is not the same. So let me make it very simple. So let's say you have a music class, which has happened, okay? Music class, we have a music classroom, right? So in music class, what is the curriculum of the teacher? What is the teacher supposed to be teaching? Music. So if we have a music teacher, teacher teaching politics, are you okay with that when it's not in her curriculum and she shouldn't be teaching politics?
If it plays into the curric, if it part of what she's trying to have the kids understand about why this music might have had some political influence or something.
Okay, so let me, let me tell you exactly the scenario.
Can I ask you a que, hold on just a minute?
Are we gonna go around? How are we doing this?
Yeah, let's go around, all right. Well, wait a minute, you, I'm gonna let you finish.
Okay, thank you. So in this circumstance, it was a music teacher that made, had a film. She wasn't teaching music to the whole elementary students and she was only teaching about protesting. That's all she was teaching. So in that circumstances, she is not teaching according to her class. That's all this policy is about. You teach according to your curriculum in class. If, if your curriculum is to teach about the politics, if your, if your curriculum is to teach about something else, then you do.
I don't have to go first if anybody else wants to go first, but I'm happy to go first.
Okay, go ahead.
So first, Mrs. Marcus, I wanted to understand your suggestion about the distinction between policy and regulation. And I would be interested to know which portions of this draft you believe would go in a policy and which portions would go in an associated regulation.
Well, I believe it's a point, I think there should be, in other words, a committee again to put this together and put it in that, so that we could incorporate this and then also regulations and policy together.
No, but in, but in your mind's eye, what's the difference between the policy and the regulation?
This is policy.
What's the difference she's asking you?
Okay, okay, then, for example, let's say you were on that committee. How, which part of it would you designate as regulation?
Regulations, I would designate as all the, the expectations of the staff would be regulation. And I would, there's stuff here, refrain from introducing political, ideological, or personal comment.
So the specifics?
The specifics, that's what I'm saying. This would be the specifics. These are more toward the regulations that allow the policy, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, then let me ask you another question. So then in terms of, let's say we did a better job or a more articulate job of splitting up, dividing up the regulation and the policy. Is that something that you would support or vote for?
No, I would, so that I think there has to be an, an outline of what is allowed and what, and what those things are and so on. Absolutely, I'm agreeing with that.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm just trying to understand, like, beginning with the end in mind.
I don't wanna confuse why.
Policy, yeah, so it's the why and then it's the how.
Right.
Okay, so.
If it's the why and then it's the how, then we need to implement this policy and put that one into this one. Because that one is not saying why, it's just saying how.
First of all, it doesn't say this is regulations. All it says is a standards-based instructional environment.
Right, so we can put that as regulation or put it into.
This is reg, more toward regulation.
Okay, there's two separate things, right?
First of all, the very first statement is why. Why, I mean, why we do, we, we were committed to fostering and.
Well, it's just the purpose. So it's telling you the purpose of standard, so it's standard-based instructional environment. So as Dr. Sherman, before he leaves, Dr. Sherman?
I'm Dr. Seaman.
Seaman, sorry, there's no Dr. Sherman.
I think you're coming back.
From Beverly, Dr. Seaman, paging Dr. Seaman. So remember the report that you did? It was specifically on standard-based instructional environment. Can you please tell us the definition of standard-based instructional environment?
I, I don't know, I don't recall a report.
It was, it's in the report.
Should I go back?
Oh, in the, no, local indicators.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, no, no, yeah, so the, the self-audit, the self-reflection tool that we have to submit to the California Department of Education is, are we fully implemented in math, science, social studies, English? In the, in the core, the, unfortunately, the cores with some elective work. And what that indicates is that we have full implementation of curriculum, that we're within a curriculum cycle, and that we, all students have access to materials.
So, yes, so going along with that, it's a standard-based instructional. So meaning, science class, you, we have our curriculum, we have our standard base. So what is, it's saying that there's boundaries, so you don't defer from that. And we don't have a teacher just giving her own opinion about other topics, for instance. That's all it is. The other policy is telling you that those topics are in the curriculum. And how do you teach it? How do you implement it? That's what that policy is, 6144. It's how do you implement these controversial subjects into, that the curriculum is already there, right? It's, it, the subject is already there in the classroom. This policy, the subject is not in the classroom. And it's setting boundaries, so it's understood you don't bring up other things, you know, other subjects into a classroom that it, the subject is not there. That's the difference. I, you can't collide the two. I've researched it, I've tried it, because it would be easier to stick it in there. But it does, it, it doesn't correspond together. And after we go through the discussion of every, you know, going through it, I do wanna read again. I wanna read what I responded to BHEA so that every single detail is understood. That's important.
Can, can I say one thing about when I read this? I actually, I read this and I thought that Dr. Stern prepared it. Because we, we have had a lot of conversations about swing and our substitute teachers coming in and having inappropriate dialogue with students that they don't know very well.
Right, and I recognize that, that is a problem. And I, it does need to be addressed, for sure.
And so, so that's why.
Yeah, no, it was not.
I was coming from a different angle because I felt like from a board perspective, we were having folks coming and going and creating uncomfortable situations for some of our students. We had this in our post-October 7th world. We had certain subs coming in and making comments. It also was causing strife between our student bodies where some were feeling isolated against others. And so when I, when I first read it, I only made one comment about the, what you're stating should be a regulation, the professional expectations for staff. I just said to maintain student privacy, safety, and comfort. That's all I, that's all I, I put. So I don't mind this moving in the direction of a policy and associated regulation. I'm okay with that.
That's all I'm trying to do is to make sure that it's understood. What is the policy, why it's there? And when, letting everybody know that, that these are the things that you can and you can't do.
But it's not that simple, Ms. Marcus.
Making sure.
It's not that simple of what, I, I don't agree with what we're saying can't be done or can't, are you saying?
No, I don't mean it that way, but I'm saying that.
Yeah, we do need to separate it so it's organized in a more linear, a fashion that separates regulations versus policy, right?
Well, what I'm thinking in terms of is if, when there's a teacher or a sub, it's totally overstepping.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about. That's now in the job of the administrators.
Okay, let's, let's go around.
Okay, that's fine, thank you for answering my question.
So we all know that we live in times where people have very different political views on things. I, I personally experienced making a social media post several months ago that I did not believe had any political connotation to it whatsoever. And I, I was, got to be put on the cover of the Courier, being recalled by some people saying it was all about my politics. And then when I went on their social media pages, if you go on mine, you probably won't find one politics post, but I went on those people's pages and it's all politics. I think, besides commenting on this exactly, because I think in the end, if we can just be mature about it, we know exactly what you mean. We all know what you mean. No one's attacking anyone who just wants to do the job. We know exactly when they take a topic and they choose to put their own ideology into something that is completely unrelated, we all know what that means. So if I need to say the quiet part out loud, I will. But that being said, no regulation or policy is worth its weight in anything without enforcement.
Yeah.
And since I've been here for the last seven, eight months, especially in some of the personnel changes that we've been making, I've been asking when I've seen certain issues with certain people, who, especially ones that have been here for a very long time. And then when I asked to see, well, what kind of disciplinary actions have happened in the past? And I've been shocked to see the answer is zero. And things that were glaring for certain people who had been doing certain infractions many times over many years and their profile was absolutely perfect. So I think one of the number one things that, sure, we can work on policies and we can sit down with BHEA and the collective bargaining agreement and all of, you know, of those things, but they're all worth nothing if you do see a violation of any sort, whether it's in this topic or in any topic, and there's no enforcement. And trust me, I have seen plenty of things that should have been written up, I guess that's the term that you all use, and nothing was ever written up. So again, I think that there also needs to be an immediate focus on, we all know the topics that people like, we all know the topics that people don't like. And there are clear rules in place right now. We do have policies, we do have the bargaining agreement. That, yeah, maybe the language isn't as strong as certain people want, but we also don't enforce them how they are right now. There is ed code, there is state law, there is federal law on certain topics. And we've seen to have glanced over all of them on many occasions. And not to point out anything specifically, but we all know that there have been incidences in classrooms highly political that have even made the paper. And then when I got elected and I said, well, can I see this person's file? There's no disciplinary action. So without a stance here to say to our administration that when these problems happen, if we don't enforce them, then who cares how many policies that we make or changes? Because it's gonna be for naught. So I really think that there needs to be more of a focus on enforcement of exactly what we have now. I am not a fan of how it's written now. I think it could be stronger. But that being said, without enforcement, it's all for naught anyway. So I think we need to have a plan in place that when infractions do happen in the letter of what we have now and anything that might become stronger in the future needs to be enforced or it's all for naught.
Okay, you, I'm gonna go to Mandy now. I think she needs a chance to draw. I think she needs a chance to address this.
So I'll say, with the best of intentions, I really, I think that, Ms. Manishari, you hit on it, that there ha, in the time I've been here, there definitely have been off-the-cuff comments that have been, you know, from, mainly from temporary, like substitutes has been one issue that has come, they have said some things that absolutely are unacceptable on any level. Whether it is their own particular bias, partisan bias, whether it's their own perceptive, perception about COVID, masks, there's been a lot of that, that absolutely made children feel unsafe and, and, you know, there's been things that have been said that perhaps made children uncomfortable for a variety of reasons. But when I look at this proposed policy, and it is, it is speaking towards standards, and the issue I have is that when we look at what some of the actual standards are that are, you know, in the state of California, many of them in fact, you know, really are reliant upon critical thinking, analytical thinking, how you, how you compose an argument. So a lot of us who are sitting here tonight, who are making arguments, myself included, are from robust and rich and multi-layered personnel and faculty that I remember throughout my life, who were able to have that professional, I don't want to say freedom, but that professional reign and the trust that they will, apart from some of the incidents we have identified, but that they will have the discretion to follow some of these enforced standards that we actually have. For example, HSS 8, or .895 is in social science, and that is looking for a facilitation of creating arguments, identifying opposing viewpoints. All those things which, of course, you could say, well, that doesn't mean that the teachers and faculty have to give their particular opinion. Okay, but at the same time, to model that type of thinking and to model how to be an analytical, creative, critical thinker, it does require that they are, they have the freedom to, to think out loud and to show their reasoning. Now, this is totally different from some of the adverse things that we have seen. I, I do recall when there was a music class that somehow went off into a territory that I simply cannot see the relationship. And that was, there was a discussion of a political movement, we know of that incident, and that is not, I don't think anyone sitting here thinks that that is reasonable for that to happen. And for that, I'm willing to say those things must be disciplined and they must be enforced. However, I stop short of trying to, to censor some of the activity that makes classrooms stimulating and fun and speaks to these very standards that I just enumerated. We also, you know, we don't want robots, guys. I'm, I'm not quite ready. We don't want robots for teachers. We want people that we trust for their richness, for their background, for the fact that they, they came in loving children. If we want just someone to sit there, or we want a machine to just give feedback and a binary response, we can move in that direction. Sadly, I feel like the schools, in many ways, in 30 years from now, may well be that way because of the environment and regulations such as these. If we want to continue to attract talent, and this is from all levels of the partisan gamut, I don't feel that this is a policy that, that needs to be called out. I looked at existing 6144. It does clearly say that a teacher can present a controversial issue impartially without promoting any partisan point of view. I think that that is more than sufficient. To bring this forward is to create something that I feel is going backwards in terms of the type of rapport we want with our, with some of our most excellent educators. And I don't think it is what they will find in the college setting, is something where we have teachers who are completely afraid to say anything or to discuss what you call sensitive issues. Just one more thing I'd like to share, is that this policy talks about avoiding the discussion of sensitive topics. Okay, so does that mean, okay, so, right, but let's say that there is a social studies class, so does that mean there can be no discussion about October 7th? That there can be no, okay, that there can be no, there can be no map that shows the, the divide? We want to talk about the Holocaust, we want to talk about George Floyd and someone sitting on his neck? So I, I just, I just think we have to be very cautious about, hold on, one last thing.
I agree with everything you're saying, and I just need to clarify the policy.
Okay, there's one final thing here that I think is quite ironic. When I look at this policy, it does, it does mention, sorry, the, the new proposed one. It's talking about not introducing, sorry, not introducing partisan, partisan, along partisan lines, right? But this, it seems to me that this policy itself is, I want to say it's a playbook from some ideology that is partisan-based.
Where?
It just feels that way to me, that's my sense. It does not feel like this is coming from a balanced...
Everything you said, I agree with you. I, I, I don't know why, why is it misunderstood? It's to the subject matter. So let's say you're in English class. We have English learners, they're in English class, and the teacher, not a substitute, the teacher discusses October 7th.
Okay.
And it's not in the curriculum, it's not in the book, it's not the subject, it's not history, it's not geography, it's not social studies, it's not in the subject matter. That's all I'm saying. So to be clear, very clear, I, I want to make it understood, it's only when it's not in the curriculum of the subject matter. Let's say you're in French class and the teacher wants to discuss, I don't know...
The rally that happened last Sunday.
Yes, anything that is not...
I agree a thousand percent.
So that's all this policy is. That's all it is.
Then we should tighten it up to say as such.
I made it so simple, like...
But Amanda, do you believe the language that is in now protects what Sigali is saying?
Please tell me where, yes. Well, it does say teachers should not spend class time on any topic which they feel is not suitable for the class, or, the current one, or related to the established course of study.
Right.
And so, how about this? What about if we were to expand on the policy that we currently have? Is that something we could all get behind?
That's a little more, I'm more comfortable with that.
That's exactly what I'm saying, is I think I would like to have a committee of two people, again, to try to work out something incorporating everything you have and everything that's in the original policy along with, because we're talking, I'm almost comparing apples and oranges here, because you're talking about a subject that'll come out of, completely out of context, in a subject like music, or that they're talking about using deodorant or something, arguing about something like that.
Correct.
Okay.
But can I just ask, what happened to the music teacher?
Okay, so...
Yeah, and that's, that's another topic too.
That's, I don't know, I have no...
Nothing.
I can tell you, because exact...
Well, we can't, we can't discuss personnel matters.
No, nothing happened, nothing happened.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm just going to be saying, like, was something enforced?
I don't know, I don't know.
We don't know, we...
I will, I will agree that, that the language is already there if it's enforceable. And if something has happened that we've all, I mean, I don't even know what happened, but if we're all saying that something happened, but nothing happened to the teacher.
Another, another example I would just like to say is that it has happened also where we've had teachers say things that are not factual. So even if it's in the subject matter, so that's also along the lines, it should be factual. You can't say, for instance, call a country by a different name, or say borders that don't exist, or, you know, even in, there was a student from Tunisia, and the teacher was saying something about Tunisia, and the student said, I'm from there, I speak the language, and she, and the teacher wouldn't let her speak. So that also, it has to be factual, you know? Speak about it, speak about anything you want, if it's in the subject matter, in the class, in the curriculum, but make sure it's factual and it's not opinion-based. That's also an issue.
Can I suggest that we perhaps form a committee of a couple members of the board to get together, go through both of these two and put them in such a way that they will reflect what you want?
Two people of the board?
Huh?
Two, you want two people, I, I don't know.
Well, we can't have three.
Yeah, only two. Do you two want to do it together? Because I feel like you have something to work on here, which is the controversial one. You're coming from two perspectives, but you want to end up at the same point.
But there is, there, I want to say there is some overlap. I know, I've discussed with you beforehand about like how it's an issue about some of these outrageous things that have happened during the class, and I respect you for bringing this forward. Right, and I, I totally respect that. I just, I, I get my, you know, the hair on the back of my neck goes up when I see that we're, we're trying to...
Stifle.
Stifle in a way that I feel is unnecessary. I mean, we have to know that some of our educators, or most of them, if not all of our educators, have discretion, spend a lot of time around kids and teenagers, whereas we have our two or three kids we go home to, they've had hundreds, 500. So some of the best, some of the best, not all of them, but some of the best folks in our lives are the teachers, because they have the perspective of multiple, of how to deal with, with kids. That is a macro view when we're, we're just with our own. However, I do recognize that there are some grownups that, that come onto our campus, maybe they're substitutes, maybe they're, you know, temporary coaches, whatever, that have said and done things that not even are necessarily political, but I've had at other schools, not this district, I had one say that, you know, go after a kid saying, you can't eat that, you're going to get cancer. You know, if you keep eating that, you're going to get diabetes tomorrow. Not only is that factually incorrect, but that is giving that child tremendous anxiety, and they go home crying, I mean, it's just, there's, for sure. And that goes back to another type of policy, which is, how do we entrain our substitutes? What is our script for how they behave, what they do and don't do? And, right, and, and bringing up swing, the idea is that we have a better vetting system because often, not always, but often, when we have substitute teachers, a lot of them are in between jobs, they've had some problems in, in their lives, not all of them, but they bring that to campus. And I've seen that again and again, and, and there, there is some fine tuning that needs to be done there. I just don't want to paint a wide swath across all our educators and say, nope, you better not talk about that, you better not talk about that. Not to mention that, you know, if you look at suicide prevention in our schools, which thankfully, I think we've done a great job, I have not heard of a lot of issues with this in the last five years, and I think it's largely because we've, we've put things in place, but the ed code does mandate that there is some ability for an adult to, with a, a particular risk, a child at risk, or a group of kids who are at risk, to broach those subjects as is necessary. Not by using the power of suggestion, but let's say there is a child who has an issue related to any of these sensitive issues. In the, in the, with the idea of preventing suicide, which we very much do not want to befall our school district on any level, there should be some license and trust for them to use their discretion about such topics. So again, that's why I sit here and I say, let's not have something that really handholds all of us, because it could have very big, far-lasting implications.
Well, the problem is, is that, that, that is why policies are into place. So we can't have free-for-all, right?
Nope, and I don't want that.
We do need to have critical thinking, I agree with that, and this, this talks about critical thinking. You want critical thinking, but you want to make sure that it's done in the subject matter and it's not done outside of the subject matter.
Right, but like if there's just a debate class, or there's Model UN, and there's no particular subject, but it's just the nature of arguing and debate, how would you, like...
Usually a debate, there's a subject.
Is that true, Dustin, or can it just be the art of...
There's always a subject in a debate.
Yeah, like Agatha Dack and stuff, they'll have a theme that year.
They have a theme. So let's say there's a debate on smoking, for instance. So let's say, they shouldn't be speaking about smoking in Spanish class. You know, I'm giving you a serious example.
What if it's in Spanish?
Well, if the Spanish teacher has it in the curriculum, let's have a debate in Spanish about smoking, then yes, go ahead, critical thinking, have the debate. But if you do have the debate on smoking, let's say, you stick to smoking, you don't talk about HIV or whatever else there is unless the teacher says so, you know?
I make a suggestion in the interest of time.
That's all this policy is.
Well, in the interest of time, we're really good with time. We have an hour.
We have an hour?
8:30 only.
Well, but we have, you know...
We have...
So are you two, are you two colleagues going to take this one together?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
But when you guys take it...
We have an hour to enjoy this.
But is it going to conclude with what happens when you break it?
So I don't want to break this policy.
That's the big part.
I want to, yes, I want to understand it, I want to digest it, I want, you know, this is not us against anybody. It, it's a strict...
No, no, but, but still, we have had a systemic problem with not following up with...
It's on all the aisles, okay? It's on all the aisles. All, different politics, you can have fanatics on both sides.
No, but again, whatever the subject matter is, without enforcement, it's all irrelevant.
But that might be personnel policy. I don't know, because I've never written an entire policy, but I hear what you're saying. Yes.
We're not rewriting it, we're going to be, we're going to discuss it and bring it back to the board.
Yes.
And again, as Ms. Warren had mentioned...
I would, I, yes.
Any policy that talks about discipline of teachers would need to be brought back to BHEAs, right?
No, no, so I would like to read, and, and again, we do have, we do have an hour and three minutes. I've literally had three hours of sleep, but when it comes to being on the board and doing these meetings, I'm wide awake. Well, let's discuss it, we have an hour. So, okay.
I've said what I need to say, I'm not going to discuss tonight further.
Sounds good.
I think we're, I think we're in good shape, and I trust the two of you to bring us something back that hopefully we can all get behind.
Anybody who has concerns, I would like to read the concerns of the matter, so, unless Mrs. Marcus wants to read it.
I don't know if we need to read all of it.
I won't read it out loud.
Why? No, read it out loud. I already said it to you.
Is this something that everybody has been able to...
Can you read it out loud?
But we've all had it, I don't know.
No, I, this is, we're here in open session for the community. The community doesn't know what we're talking about right here. This was a private, this was an email, no, this was an email of the concern of BHEA. So I sent all the pinpoints of...
This was from BHEA?
No, this is the response to BHEA. Would you like to read it?
I don't think we need to respond right now.
I feel like we, I think we can move on.
I don't have, I don't have it.
Yeah, it has, it has to come back, exactly. Thanks, ladies. Thank you so much. I don't have much to add, other than there's so much exciting stuff going on. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work this summer. I know that we are really looking forward to a big year, which is going to have some change, so I appreciate everyone's hard summer work. Thank you. And I'll see you on Wednesday, July 16th.
I will not see you on July 29th. I want to thank Mrs. Marcus for being my co-pilot at the Health and Safety Commission. Thank you to Colby Gilardian, again, for the amazing presentation where we were able to inform the city on a lot of our cybersecurity measures that we're taking, and especially the school partner designation that we were able to acquire with Instagram, which we're very proud of. I'm just excited about sports. Just a little bit of update on the Nike front. We solidified our girls' volleyball uniforms, which came out amazing. I spoke to our coach, who was absolutely, said the girls were through the moon. And we're putting in an order right now for district shirts that will be here, here in a couple weeks, but just very excited about the future and, you know, the best is yet to come, so, thanks.
So I think I, I was, in Dr. Chernis's report, I said a lot. We went to one Beverly Hills, we went to the field trip. What else did we do? I can't, you know... Yeah, we're constantly moving, I'm exhausted, I slept for three hours. Judy woke me up when I was supposed to be ready at 7:00. That's never happened to me before. Yeah, it's okay. So that's it.
Is Colby here? Okay. I want to thank this young man, because I decided, in the interest of learning more about a possible CTE addition, and I know that Dr. Seaman liked the idea, and certainly Colby liked the idea, and the idea about drones is amazing, and I know I sound like an old, old lady, but wow. I mean, Colby was very nice, and he showed me the very basics of a very high-powered drone. He is a certified drone operator, and he showed me some of the, of the basics. It's just incredible what it can do. You can put in coordinates, you can put in an address, it will go and it will come back. It will, it is designed so that it will not hit anyone or any building, it will stop. You can give it hand signals. And, and so, I just felt that it was something very eye-opening, and I think that it's always important that we learn as board members, as faculty, and we also incorporate this or find a way to include this in our CTE, I'm sorry, put this into our CTE program, because I see a lot of math, I see social studies, I see a lot of things that would be... a lot of things, that would be very great, so I was very thankful for his instruction on that, what else, tomorrow I'll be meeting with the Human Relations Commission, and I will be asking you guys sometime this night about, tonight, about anything that you would care for me to share with them, and that's all I have, thank you.
I just want to make one more comment, the Health and Safety Commission is losing Mr. Dr. Cheng, and it's down now to three members, and in another six months, Dr. Hilborn will be leaving, and then there'll be two members, and I think that the plan is to incorporate it into the human, the resources department, commission, so there'll be one less commission for the city, and thank you to Mr. Stewart for presentation yesterday at the Health and Safety, I think they enjoyed getting that information, and knowing that the school district is on top of things, and not letting anything to happen to the students, and I think that's it, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting until July 16th, the meeting is adjourned, it's 8:35.